Arrange a little bit and deal with item four first, which is a planning board recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for 129 Parker Street. Bill, if you could give the public a quick summary of this matter.
Sure. So, what, the purpose of this request is to have the planning board, the board of health, and the conservation commission make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And the reason they have to make a recommendation to the ZBA is because any construction within a Zone Two well protection area, which the 129 Parker Street project is in, requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. That hearing is scheduled with the zoning board of appeals for April, I'm sorry, May 22nd, it'll be right here, or downstairs probably, I'm not sure which, depending on if we can film it or not. And what they're going, the zoning board of appeals is going to determine whether or not they would issue a permit for any development within the well-filled protection area. The purpose of this request tonight is simply to get a recommendation from the planning board that I can provide to the zoning board of appeals. And what, just to give you an idea for the audience, what the board is determining at this point is four things. And they're going to issue a recommendation on these four things. Is the project in harmony with the purposes and intent of section 9.2? And will it promote the purposes of the water supply protection district? Two, is it appropriate to natural topography soils and other characteristics of the site to be developed? Three, will not have an adverse environmental impact on any water body, groundwater supply or water course in the district? And four, will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of any of the existing or potential water supplies? So that's what this board is going to be considering for the recommendation. The recommendation is not binding to the zoning board of appeals, but it must have a vote taken to determine if they're going to recommend approval. If they decide not to recommend approval, they would have to issue a statement as to why it did not meet the criteria that I just read to you. And so that's where we're at. This is not a public hearing, it's up to the chair if he wants to, I don't know if you want to entertain comments on this or not, but it's not a public hearing, it's just a vote, it's requested. The public hearing will be at the zoning board of appeals on, at Monday on the 22nd of May.
Before this board meets again?
Yeah, before you meet again, that's correct. And we're going to ask the same things of the same request of the conservation commission and of the board of health.
Does the applicant have anything you'd like to add in regard to this matter? I understand it's fairly, anyways, do you have anything to add?
No.
Pretty straightforward. Questions from the board? Question to Wayne, I guess. I know that we're, there are a number of elements still in play related to water, in my view at least, quality, quantity, we're still discussing a number of these issues. Do you feel that it's appropriate to move forward with a recommendation on this at this time? Or, I know we will need to at some point, but what's your, what's your take on that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So, actually, Bill and I talked about this when I provided a recommendation to Bill and the ZBA, exactly to your point, is that the project is still under review by the planning board. And I think it could be, the special permit could be approved as long as it has a condition that it's subject to the approval of the planning board through second review. I think if that was done, I would be okay with the special permit being recommended to the ZBA.
So what you're suggesting is that the conditions of the ZBA's granting of their special permit would be contingent on our site plan?
Correct. So that if something happened and, you know, this project was never approved, then that that special permit would be null and void through the ZBA. It seems like it's kind of a requirement that, you know, the zoning requires it, but, you know, why do we need a special permit from the ZBA? Just because we're in Zone Two, so. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
With the ZBA. I mean, the ZBA obviously has to accept my recommendation, but I'm okay with you guys recommending that, as long as that condition was applied.
Any comments?
No, I think we've got adequate protections built in if the ZBA does it that way.
And you'll be attending the ZBA meeting as well?
All right, so I just, Bill, if you want to give me a little guidance, or Barbara, on how to make the motion, how to make a motion to suggest or request, I guess, that they, that it, their special permit is contingent on our site plan?
Say, I move to recommend approval of the special permit contingent on this board's site plan approval. Does that capture?
Site plan special, and special permit.
And special permits approvals. Does that capture what you were saying?
I'd like to move that the planning board recommends approval of the special permit by the zoning board of appeals for development within the water supply protection district contingent on this board's approval of the site plan and special permit before us.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. So now I'd like to reopen the public hearings that we have currently continued. There's four of them, one for the site plan approval for 129 Parker Street, and three public hearings for the special permits, drive-through use, multifamily dwelling, and continued care retirement community. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is David Click, coming in for Andrew Cattizaro on behalf of 129 Parker Street development. So, just to reiterate from our last meeting on April 25th, we heard from Jason Sobel of Green International, who addressed in some great extent, you know, questions regarding traffic issues that actually were from April 11th, as well as handling the questions on crosswalks, stopwarks, mitigation concerns. Further, we heard from David Fromato, from onsite engineering, who fielded questions on water and sewer consumption as well as water capacity of the project. We had tabled operations, just given the time of the other applicants that were behind us. So tonight, from my understanding, the agenda is starting off with site operations, which will be put on by Katie Keefe of 129 Parker. Then we're going to architecture with Valerie Williams. Oh, I'm sorry, then traffic from an internal standpoint, from again Jason Sobel of Green International. And then landscape from James Almonte from Warden Design Associates. And retail architecture from Valerie Williams with HFE. And if there's any time left, we also have Mark Lowen of Leonardian Architecture.
If you have questions.
If you have questions.
All right. Busy night.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to designate Megan as the?
Yeah, I have received word that Andrew will not be joining us, so.
So should we move Megan up here?
Megan, you're welcome to join us, in front of the room if that suits you.
For the camera, a second.
Great. That recap and that agenda for tonight is consistent with my understanding, so please proceed. One question, you passed out an operations manual, is that, has that been changed since the one that was sent out a few days ago?
Got it.
Okay, great.
Does she need this?
I think so, for the TV and posterity.
Good evening, my name's Katie Keefe, I'm the property manager for Capital Group Properties. All right, so the operations and maintenance packet that was handed out to you guys, I'll just go over that and stop me at any time if you have questions or need clarification. All right. So the first section, number one, just talks a little bit about Capital Group properties. The main thing we really wanted to focus on tonight was really that we pride ourselves on our preventive maintenance, we think that it, it really prolongs all of our portfolio. And we take a great amount of detail on all of our buildings and properties, and I'll go through that in more detail with you guys. The second, second section, number two, is just our basic company contact information. Site number three gets into a lot of the details that I know there was some questions on, so we got some confirmed answers as far as site-specific information. The first section talks about the, just basic site information, the utilities. The second section talks about the retail areas that will be buildings number one through nine on the site plan here. That retail area, the hours of operations for that, those retail buildings will be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., or as permitted if something is changed in the specific permit for one of those buildings. If there's a health club that does sign with us, there's a possibility for that to be a 24-hour-a-day health club that's not determined as of yet. Saturday and Sunday will be 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The site lighting for that retail area will be on at dusk and off at 11:30. And the delivery hours, anytime we have a new retail tenant move in, I meet with them and go over site-specific information, any restrictions. And for all of those buildings, we're going to strongly recommend that they urge any and all deliveries to take place between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. to eliminate late-hour deliveries for those buildings.
So, sorry, when you say strongly recommended, that means you as the property manager strongly recommend that the tenant adhere to those hours?
Correct.
That's what you mean, okay.
Yes. The residential area, over here on the side of the map, that will be the apartment and the assisted living buildings. Those hours of operations, mainly the, pertains specifically to the leasing office, will be 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Because of the nature of this parcel of property and that there'll be residents living there, the site lighting will be on from dusk to dawn, just for basic security of all the residents and visitors. Again, the delivery hours will be strongly recommended 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to eliminate late-night deliveries for that area.
And just another question, in terms of hours of operation for residential, you're talking about the office, obviously, the rest of the facility is 24 hours, is, of course.
Correct. Yep. The main leasing office that would be open to the public. The next section talks about the restaurant area, that would probably be specifically buildings four through possibly nine on the map here. Those hours of operations would be Sunday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., or as permitted if something changes in their permitting, once they come online. Friday and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., again, or as permanent if there's any restrictions. The site lighting for the restaurant area will be on at dusk, off at the permitted required time, it will be based on what type of restaurant, and we'll go through the proper approvals for that. And the delivery hours, again, consistent with the seven to 10, strongly recommended for all their vendors. The grocery store area that would be building number 10 on the site plan here, their hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday, 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., not 24 hours, so that's changed a bit from previous discussion. Their site lighting would be off at 12:00 a.m., on at 5:00 a.m. However, there would be general security lighting that would be on from dusk to dawn for security for employees that work there. The delivery hours is a little bit different for the restaurant, their grocery and frozen food all come before 9:00 p.m., however, their perishables do come between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. And then there's some notes on the miscellaneous general property, the site lighting, there will be sporadic lights throughout the whole property that will be on from dusk to dawn, just for general security for patrons, anyone visiting the property. And then the main pylon sign on the property would come on at dusk, off at 11:30, same for the building signage. And then the trash pickup hours, again, when we meet with any of the tenants that come online here, I printed out the town of Maynard guidelines for any of the trash disposal and pickup to make sure that they adhere to all the regulations for dumpsters, pickup times, and they'll be noted that their pickups have to be Monday through Saturday, 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., based on some of those restrictions. All right. So the next section, number four, kind of goes into a good amount of detail based on the services that we provide to all of our portfolio, especially in mixed-use development like this. One of the most important services that we offer is that six times a week, we have a groundskeeper that will maintain the property. His responsibilities generally just include policing the entire property, removing any debris, emptying the trash cans, wiping everything down, tables. Some of the common areas that will be throughout the property that patrons can sit at will be maintained and cleaned daily. So we'll always have eyes on the property, making sure everything looks well-kept. Twice a month, I visit the property myself and do my own inspections. I report any issues to my staff, my facilities manager, if there's grounds issues specifically, I'll meet with him and talk about areas that need more attention. I'll inspect some services by our landscape contractors, snow removal contractors, dependent on the season, and address any issues with them that we feel are lacking and need some And then anytime a new tenant comes into the property, like I said, we meet with them and go through everything site-specific, make sure that they're comfortable with what they should be doing, shouldn't be doing on the property, that they know where certain utilities are, and that they're, they're comfortable with all the regulations and stipulations for this property before they move in. Included in the packet, kind of towards the back, is our monthly preventive maintenance program. It goes through a lot of detail of the services that we perform, either in-house or with our contractors, that are, really focuses on our preventive maintenance for inside and outside of each of the properties and on the common area. Then we go into a little bit of the seasonal services, snow and ice management. Again, in the packet is our snow, snow and ice management plan that talks really specifically and has a copy of this map that we can go through that shows snow storage areas, snow melter locations, all that stuff. So at the onset of any snow season, my team meets with the snowplow contractors, will review the site plan with them, we make sure that we have a list of all their equipment, trucks, personnel that will be on-site, make sure that they each have a copy of the site plan, so that they're, they're familiar with the property and they know where everything should go and shouldn't go. During the holiday seasons, we'll provide a police detail during the high-traffic events to eliminate traffic concerns for the patrons and some of the neighbors. Another seasonal service, we have contracts in place with landscapers that will come and perform weekly services for lawn mowing, they'll weed all the beds throughout the property, they'll pick up any debris that the groundskeeper may have missed. They'll make sure that all the pavement is blown off, that everything's really neat and clean weekly. And then annually, we'll go through and do any shrub and tree maintenance replacements. That's something that we take a lot of pride into as our landscaping, we make sure that it's well-maintained, that we have lists of any replacements that need to be done and that we take care of it right away. We have spring, summer, and fall fertilization that we contract out with a lawn company that will come and do treatments, as well as address any problem areas throughout the property. Again, we take a lot of pride in our landscaping and the way that the property looks and make sure that those treatments are stayed up on to eliminate any issues. We contract out with spring and fall cleanup. Spring is done before May 15th, fall cleanup is to be done by November 30th. They both include a really thorough cleaning of the property, spring includes thatching, new mulch, taking out anything that may be dead in landscape beds. And then fall is cleaning up all the leaves, sticks, trash, anything like that, and cleaning up the property well. Once a year, we contract with a licensed engineer to perform a stormwater inspection. In our monthly preventive maintenance schedule, you'll see that we actually have in-house staff that do our own monthly operations and maintenance and physical inspections of the stormwater system. However, once a year, we do contract with that licensed engineer to provide us and you guys with a report to make sure that everything is flowing the way that it should in the stormwater system and that there's no issues. He also presents us with a list of maintenance that should be done that year to eliminate any issues coming up. Once a year, I also walk the property with the building ownership and we perform kind of a upgrade walkthrough, per se. If we want to make any changes to the property, if striping needs to be done, we want to make any upgrades as far as seating, anything like that on the property, that's, once a year, I go out with ownership myself and we make a plan to do any upgrades like that. And then overall, on a day-to-day basis, we oversee all of our subcontractors, myself and my staff, we make sure that the preventive maintenance contracts we have in place are being adhered to, that the scope of work that we sub out to contractors is being done to our company standards, and we address any issues right away, should there be any. And then the next section goes through some additional maintenance services that we provide. We do have lists of approved contractors that we provide to a lot of the tenants. Some of the retail tenants aren't necessarily in this area before, so they don't always know local contractors, local contacts, so we make sure before they move in that they have plenty of people to call should something come up, and somebody that can get there quickly and that we've used before and trust, so. And then talks a little bit about what we do as far as billing and finances, and that we bid out all of our contracts to several contractors, we make sure that we're getting a competitive price for things. All right. And then section five just reviews our current management portfolio, a list of our commercial buildings, our retail buildings, and our residential, over 55 condo complexes that we maintain the association for as well. Section six just goes over our employee responsibilities, it kind of breaks down how our team operates and who reports to who. And again, our, our whole team is physically on-site, obviously, our groundskeeper is here every day, six days a week. The facilities manager is probably going to be on-site twice a week, and then I'm physically on-site twice a month. So we always have eyes on the property, which is great. And then the next section is our snow and ice management plan that kind of goes in further detail on this map here. This is actually the spec sheet that will be given to the snowplow contractor, and like I said, it'll be made sure that each piece of equipment and driver that's on this property has this list specifically and adheres to it, so they know exactly what's supposed to take place, when, and where. So I don't know if everybody can see, in red here, there's specific snow storage areas throughout the property. We'll make sure that those areas are marked and staked out by the contractor so that they know where they're supposed to be placing snow, so that it's not stored in any location other than what's hashed out on red. And about midway down on that page, it talks about that accumulation of one to three inches of snow will be pushed off into these snow storage areas. Accumulation of four to eight inches will also be pushed into the snow storage areas. And eight to 10 will be pushed off and then determined if the snow melters are to be used. In green here, the several locations all over this map where the possible snow melter locations could be, we want to make sure that should we have to use a snow melter, that we make sure that there's adequate room for them and that they're next to a drain to make sure that there's not any freeze or anything that would happen if those snow melters are in use. And that would take place, accumulation over 10 inches will be treated with a combination of snow melting and hauling off-site if required. And then the next sections are just some spec sheets and some details on what de-icing treatments a snow contractor will use, they're a little bit different than some other contractors would. We make sure that anything that's put down is environmentally friendly, doesn't harm any of the paved surfaces on the property, and doesn't interfere with the stormwater maintenance. And the next section, oh, it's just a printout clarification of the waste removal bylaws from the town of Maynard to make sure that we're adhering to all of those procedures. And the last section before the map is our monthly preventive maintenance schedule. I won't bore you with all the details on here, but mainly, we do HVAC filter and maintenance on the retail buildings that we'll maintain twice a year. There's a lot of monthly services that we do that are consistent throughout the year. We make sure that someone's on-site off-hours and does a nighttime lighting check to make sure that all the security lighting is working properly. We send out reminder notifications to all the tenants monthly on important reminders that if there's anyone new to the property, again, to make sure they have site specifics, they know who to contact in case of an emergency. We're always checking any vacancies to make sure that there's no issues in them. Heat's working okay, we don't have any frozen pipes. There's a lot of preventive maintenance that we do monthly, really just to avoid any disasters. We always want to have feet and eyes on-site, just so that we can catch something before it happens. So this maintenance schedule is reviewed with my team on a weekly basis, so that we make sure that we're not missing anything, everything's delegated to somebody. We'll also make sure that if one of our staff hasn't been here in a few weeks, that they take the maintenance on the next month, again, just so that they can get feet and eyes on the property to make sure that we're all comfortable with what we're up against. And I think that's it. Do we have any questions, concerns?
I'm sure, I'm sure there are. I guess I'll just make a couple comments. I'll confirm with Wayne, this is on your plate to review, I guess, in more detail, and you haven't had a chance to do that yet.
Correct. We will.
So they'll be for everyone's understanding, there'll be review provided by VHB on a lot of these details. My understanding is that, or I guess I'd make the general comment that, you know, I'd like to, perhaps unless others disagree, I'd like to defer conversation on the lighting until we hear a more complete presentation on the site lighting in terms of what they are, cutoffs, photometrics, and so forth. To me, that ties, you know, it's obviously related to the hours, but I think it's important to understand fully what the lighting is going to be before we evaluate the timing of such lighting, so if we could table that perhaps a little bit later. At this point, if anyone from the board has specific questions, with the understanding that we will be getting further review from VHB in the next few weeks. that we will be getting further review from VHB in the next few weeks.
I have a question.
Please.
Just looking at the snow storage areas on the map, obviously, many of the snow storage areas are along the walls, but some of them, I just wanted to hear the thought process and how they were chosen and, you know, confirm that they won't cause any visibility issues, you know, if they were kind of high.
Well, we try to keep away from the residential.
Sure.
Left and right side of the property, we try to put it central. Where basically cars wouldn't be parking on a typical day, so we could store the snow there and, you know, melt it as the piles get up.
Mr. Chairman, I do have two quick questions.
Please.
The MS, the, sorry, the ONM relative to stormwater seems pretty comprehensive. I'm guessing based on the details that Kate went through, that you guys will keep written records of that. I would ask, maybe we could just modify this to say that those written records will be available to the town because of the proximity to the town well.
We would send an handling to the.
Yeah. EPA keeps getting a little bit more stringent on stormwater and so forth than I think having a written record. We've had this issue with other places in town where, you know, we have an ONM annual, then you go two years from now looking for something and there's like nobody can find anything, you know? So if we could just document in the ONM that that'll be available periodically or upon request or whatever, I think that would be helpful.
We update that monthly internally anyway, so that's very great.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then I'm just going to touch on it. I know, Mr. Chairman, you said not to talk about lighting, but I would like to make sure that the security lighting that's referenced in here, I think it is important from a safety perspective, that while I understand at 11:30 the site's going to go dark, there's going to be security lights certain places, make sure that that is shown on the photometric plan. I don't know, only because I can't remember.
I think it is.
So it would be good to show those locations where the security lighting is proposed on the photometric plan so we can just make sure that it's most appropriate for vehicle and safety access. You mentioned a potential 24-hour operation. If there was a health bug, we want to make sure that that's adequately lived from a safety perspective. Make sure that's shown.
Thank you. Please.
A question about the seasonal spring, summer, fall fertilization.
Sure.
Are you going to take measures to, you know, to make sure that that doesn't interfere with the protected wetlands that above the property?
Yes, sure, we absolutely can.
My question has to do with your company's operations on the site, specifically the location. Is, I may have missed this, but is there a part of the site where you have an office and a, and a, you know, a facility, park trucks and store materials of any kind, or?
Each, each one of the buildings will have a left, a right, a small storage room. Our three has a little bit bigger ones, so we'll be kind of keeping stuff for that, for those buildings in the particular building. There won't be a separate building associated with it. We won't have them, obviously, you know, we're not that far away. So there won't be any trucks parked out there. There'll drive anywhere that truck, might be a small motor car or something that, as you go, as you go around picking up trash, but that's, you know, basically it.
I guess I'll take some questions from the audience, from the public. If you have any particular questions or comments related to the presentation on operations, we will return to this when we receive comments from our own peer review and I'm sure the board will have more deliberations on, on a lot of these details, but, you know, we'll take whatever comments you have at this time related to what's been presented. Yes, please.
I have two questions related to hours of operation. Specifically, I don't understand what terminology strongly recommended means. I think there are either limits or there aren't, and let's not pretend strongly recommended is a limit. As we know, this development is being put in the middle of three residential established residential areas. And throughout the years of meetings about this, the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board has assured the residences that the quality of life in their neighborhoods would be protected and one area of protection is around delivery areas. So I request that the Board seek firm and clear limits to the delivery hours. I would also ask for the clarity on the delivery hours for the grocery store before 9:00 PM means nothing. If they have a start time and a stop time, and given that there are no day limits there, and that grocery includes frozen food could be before 9:00 AM, which means between 12:00 AM and 9:00 PM, and then perishables will come between 1:00 and 5:00 AM. Essentially, there's 24-hour a week, seven-day-a-week delivery to the grocery store. And that is unacceptable to the quality of life in a residential neighborhood, and I hope that the Board will encourage limitations on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll reiterate what my understanding of strongly recommended is and I'll, if I missed something, let me know, but it, my understanding is the proposal from the applicant is that the delivery hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, say for example, for the retail area, is a recommendation to their tenants, but not a requirement. That's what they're proposing.
And are you able to put strict limits on that, that they would be able to be enforceable if it's violated?
We have the ability to restrict those hours and I'm sure that that will be discussed. And I, but I appreciate the feedback.
And any thoughts or comments related to basically 24-hour a day, seven-day-a-week delivery for the grocery store?
Well, I mean, I certainly share your concern that the grocery frozen food hour, delivery hour proposal is not specific enough personally. And I guess, you know, I'll, I'll hear from, from others if we want to dive into this right now or if we need, if we want to think about it and/or wait for recommendations from Wayne on the overall plan. We do have a lot to cover tonight, however, I can assure you that we will revisit these issues in detail. Yes.
I've been attending meetings for years and these hours do seem well outside the previous discussions and what the applicant has mentioned. Unfortunately, I don't have my notes from all of these meetings. But in the restaurant area, being open at 12:00 AM and having things aside from the grocery store being 12 hours, 24 hours, the restaurant area seems to leave the residents, and I know this is, you know, glad that the other, you know, three neighborhoods in this area, but that's when you leave at best for maybe five hours of quiet time for sleep for the homes and the residences near the neighborhood. So there's a lot of activity late into the night and early into the morning for these hours. And it's not just on property, but it's when the traffic leaves and people may distribute their noise and their trash and their, and their cars up and down the road. We already get some of that now, we're just, these are our current businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Paul Drines, Hill Street. What's the operation of your snow melter and what's the decibel rating of it? What's going?
Applicant, you're free to answer directly.
Snow melter would run during the day whenever possible. It, it will be used at night if, depending on when it snows. As far as decibels, it's nothing but a furnace on the bottom of it. There's no moving parts or nothing. You dump the snow in, there's a furnace down below and it melts the snow when it comes out. What makes the noise would be the front-end loader loading the snow melter or the backhoe.
I think you got some decibel rating you're not telling us about.
There's no floor in the operation?
Nope.
Why does it have to run at night?
It all depends on when it snows. I mean, if we have a storm that starts at 6 o'clock in the evening and we have to get the place open for 7, 8 o'clock the next morning, we're going to have to work at night to remove the snow and melt it. It all depends on when it snows. We're not going to work at night if we don't have to.
Those things are loud. And yet, the way you've got them situated, they're all on the residential areas. You've got two areas that are internal, but the rest is soft and soft. Why don't you come down here when they're running at night and try sleeping for a while? I know what they sound like.
We purposely kept them away from the residential areas. We tried to keep them inside the middle of the project.
You're in a north, north section there.
So those sound are.
You got one on the south side there.
Well, not really. It's more in the middle of the parking lot on the south side.
Don't forget, you're in a hole. And we're above, so we're going to hear all that noise coming out of there.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, John Restingham, 11 Devlin Road. Will there be a limit on the hours of landscaping? You know, sometimes landscapers are out there at 6, 7:00 AM, a Saturday morning. Is there a limit on the hours for landscapers?
Yes, the contract, the specifications aren't established yet, but we certainly can to eliminate anything early in the morning.
I have two questions. First has to do with your concern, or I guess it's more of a concern to really reiterate the importance of the lighting and again, the fact that this sits in a hole and the whole area around it is not going to be affected by the lighting, especially at nighttime. So I appreciate the fact that you're really going to take a look at that and be considerate of the neighborhood. My question is, if the neighbors find that all of these guidelines are not being attested to or, if, how do we, who is going to be policing that to make sure that they are in keeping? I guess my third piece is, if Capital Group is no longer the owner down the road, if they sell, so Capital Group obviously won't be managing it anymore, are the rules going to be in place so that whoever takes over is also going to have to enforce those?
So that would be, if there was a violation of the conditions of approval, for example, that would become a code enforcement issue and the town would deal with that. So if there was something that was, as we have periodically, you know, in different, different subdivisions, if there was something unique to this approval or a condition of approval that was being violated, then it would be typically a code enforcement issue. If it was something that involved maybe an environmental situation or something like that, there'd probably be other groups involved, like the Conservation Commission or whatever the case is, but typically a code enforcement, typically the town.
But how do we enforce it though? Do we fine them or, you know, I mean, it's one thing to.
Well, yeah, yeah. That's a process that's contained in the town bylaws. I mean, there's, for code violations, that's not something this board would deal with, but it would be something where hopefully it doesn't, wouldn't happen, but if it was, it would be something that eventually would percolate up to a Board of Selectmen where there could be, there could be fines involved, there could be. And sometimes if there's outstanding, if the project isn't completed, there's other measures that can be taken.
And I'll add, it's my understanding that this operations plan becomes part of the site plan approval and it would carry with the property to whomever purchases it in perpetuity, I believe, right?
Exactly.
Yes, please.
So might understand then, now maybe you can help on this, are there restaurants within the town, is everything, are the hours of operation set the site plan or is this part of zoning?
It depends, it depends if it's a special permit.
In certain cases, there may be, I'm not aware of any that we have at the moment, but that doesn't, but honestly, I don't know, there could be. But if there's a problem with noise or something like that, you know, then it becomes a code enforcement issue and it's something where we send the zoning inspector to. Or if it was something, you know, noxious like a, an odor or something that was disruptive or nuisance, it might be dealt with a different way as well, but typically code enforcement.
So if we as residents, we own restaurants, we honestly tend to, instead of wanting trouble while the weather is, because you'll have to, clean up the restaurant, people moving, cars and so forth, does that come in with solely planning more than with these people?
Oh, I see, I misunderstood your question, I apologize. Yeah, at this point, this is a special permit application and the, and the board could act as they see. That would be mitigate any circumstances like that that the board felt.
Okay. Thank you.
One question I have, I guess, you know, we've seen the concept plan and all these things. You've distinguished, we know the grocery store is the grocery store. I'm trying to relate the plan to the operations plan and the various definitions and categories. Is there a, just remind me, I guess, everyone, is there a distinction between restaurant area and retail area that would, or is it based, or would this operations plan be based on the uses that are applied to the site by the applicant through their?
Through their concept plan approval. And the, in other words, you're saying would it, would it be, would there be a comprehensive set of regulations that was outside of this?
What I'm, what I'm just getting at is you've, you've defined the retail area. Sorry.
I hear your question.
Go ahead.
So we know the grocery stores here. Buildings one through nine are mixed-use retail and restaurants. You know, the restaurants are not going to be in one and two, there's one proposed for three, there's one proposed for four, there might be one in six or eight, and there might be some smaller fast food stuff in five, but the sit-down restaurants are going to be in three, four, and basically six or eight.
Okay.
So it's not like a specific restaurant area, but what Kate was saying is that if there's a restaurant at six, the bills will be a little bit different hours and the other retailers are going to be at here, but there's a restaurant in building eight.
So currently, you have the discretion to build out or finish your, the retail buildings, one through ten, one through nine, sorry, according to your business plan or whatever folks are applying for. Within that, you're going to define, it's either going to be a retail or it's going to be a restaurant. And those two categories would follow these two hours that you're proposing. Okay. Well, I think, please.
I just wanted to make one other comment to something that's been vaguely referred to tonight, but was more clearly stated in a prior meeting. And that is simply a question of the use of the residential buffer zones as snow retention areas, which is designated on this map on both the north and the south side. And just ask that those residential buffers be contested and highly utilized as residential areas.
Thanks. Yeah, I, we're going to talk about buffers tonight, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, including their use for snow storage or, thank you. I guess maybe just a quick conversation with the board. I mean, we, we have a lot of content to absorb, we're still kind of in that mode, folks are comfortable, we can move on, continue hearing the various presentations and obviously, you know, we've heard from the public, we can return to, obviously, we're going to, we have a deliberation period after the public hearing is closed where we can, we can't accept any new information, but we can return to these items and talk about them in detail. So I guess, hearing no further questions from the board, we can move forward and with everyone's understanding that, you know, we're waiting for input from Wayne on this entire operations plan, we'll have another series of discussions about this as, as a group. But thank you for your, your public comment and we'll just move on, unless you have anything else to add, we can move on.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add one thing. So we will take a look.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add one thing. So, we'll take a look, a closer look at the, the, uh, plan. The hours of operations, we probably shouldn't be able to give you a lot of guidance on. You may be able to do some based on our experience with other retail establishments and so forth. So that's something that the board should at least consider and think about. I mean, the people in the audience are making some good points, and I think you just need to digest that. It's not uncommon, I'll be honest with you from my experience with other boards, to limit certain hours based on public important of the board's discretion. So, it's something that can be discussed at a future time.
Great. Sure. One more comment.
Okay. And regarding the hours, I just wanted to mention, you know, we should look at the surrounding towns, and just the life invaded. You know, there's some places used to have longer hours, and they basically gave up on them because there's nobody there going out at these late hours. And then, there's just one, a quick thing, is an annual schedule for landscaping is that category. I'll look around and what happens in the year.
Thank you.
Although, I guess just to answer that quickly, I think we heard, there's going to be daily maintenance from groundskeeper to be on-site any day of the week, who I think would pick up on any issues of concern, to address that concern.
It was mentioned specifically, the annual...
Yeah, just to clarify on your question. So that, what I referred to as an annual list was kind of like a replacement or changes to the property. Anything that would be a repair that's necessary. We have weekly contracted landscape services that are responsible for reporting that to me. You'll see too, that my groundskeeper is responsible for reporting any of those issues to me as well, as well as to our facilities manager. So anything that was a repair or an issue that was needed, there are several people that would take care of it right away. The annual visits are more of a changes to the property that we wanna make annually, rather than maintenance, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, we're gonna hear from Jason Sobel of Green International, regarding internal traffic.
Good evening. My name is Jason Sobel with Green International. It's good to be back here in front of the board, and good to see everyone again. So, as you all know, over the last couple of meetings, I've covered a lot of ground, reviewed all the off-site and traffic, and the operations, and mitigation. And last meeting a couple of weeks ago, I also reviewed a lot of the internal traffic. So my discussion and presentation tonight will be fairly brief, really just a few follow-up items. One of the issues that I did discuss last week, but the question had been raised regarding vehicle queuing, both from the signal at Parker Street back into the site, and how that might or might not affect the roundabout, as well as from the roundabout potentially backing up to Parker Street. So as, as I discussed a couple of weeks ago, we've looked at all the peak hour analyses, weekday AM peak hour, PM peak hour, as well as Saturday midday peak hour. And then we also looked at a peak seasonal traffic, basically December shopping season, holiday shopping season. And you may recall that the estimates there that we used for the analysis was forty-two percent higher traffic. And as I stated a couple of weeks ago, the queues from the roundabout, even during the holiday shopping season, are never expected to go back to Parker Street and disrupt traffic along Parker Street. During the holiday shopping season only, and only during the Saturday midday peak, I mentioned that there was gonna be traffic going back from the Parker Street signal along the site drive into the roundabout, as Katie mentioned earlier this evening. And as I talked about a couple of weeks ago, that will be managed by a police officer during those few days a year when that happens. So the graphic I'm showing here is really just to graphically show the queues that we would expect. The red, this red line here is the ninety-fifth percentile queue. Basically, you know, based on the traffic levels that we're anticipating during the peak holiday season, we'd expect the traffic, the vehicle queue to be less than that ninety-five percent of the time. This is sort of the max queue that's, that's, that would be expected. And as you can see, it does extend a little bit into the roundabout. That would disrupt the flow, and therefore, that's, that's really why we're having the police control during those periods of time, so that the roundabout itself stays free and clear, and traffic continues to flow through the roundabout, and doesn't disrupt things on the other approaches. So in addition to that queuing issue with this new graphic that I wanted to show, also just wanted to follow up. One of the peer review comments was a question about the functional parking demand. Basically, an analysis of all the parking on-site, and how is it all gonna work, and is there enough parking, is there too much parking, and all that. So again, we've used data published by Institute of Traffic, excuse me, Institute of Transportation Engineers, IT, and we looked at all the various, the various land uses on the site, the retail, the apartments, the continuing care, and the grocery store as well. And we looked at, you know, again, sort of the parking profiles. Certainly, the residential stuff, overnight, everyone's home, that parking lot is pretty full. No one's at the retail areas in the middle of the night, hopefully. So, based on that, you know, again, we looked at sort of the typical season, as well as peak, peak holiday shopping season. And we've done analyses for sort of the typical weekday, Monday through Thursday, a separate Friday analysis, people go shopping more Friday after work, things like that. And then, and then a Saturday analysis as well. So the peak parking demand is expected to be peak season, holiday shopping season on a Saturday. And we find that it's just over fourteen-hundred-and-fifty is the peak parking demand for the site. You may recall, there's seventeen-seventy-two parking spaces proposed on-site, which is a peak utilization of eighty-two percent. And that's, that's well within the range that we like to see. Usually, we don't wanna see the peak utilization go above ninety percent. When that happens, generally, you know, people start meandering through the parking lots looking for that last parking spot that's open. So based on that, we're not expecting any issues for the, for the parking. And again, we're exceeding or meeting all the zoning requirements as well for parking. So that's really all the new information I'd like to present. Just as a quick follow-up and some sort of housekeeping stuff, we had received peer review comments a few weeks ago regarding the off-site study and the traffic study that we completed. We had a working group meeting, I think, was it last week, a couple of weeks ago? And so we went through a lot of those, and I think we're in general agreement. In the next couple of days, we'll be submitting a formal response to document that, and for, for the town to review and to look at. And in regards to the off-site mitigation design plans, we received comments from, from Wayne, the town engineer and the peer reviewer, just last week on that. We've begun to look through it, and I think we'd like to discuss and have another working group meeting to go through some of those comments as well. So I'm not really gonna get into, into those now. So thanks for your time, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
I think one of the previous comments regarding internal traffic was trying to understand the impact of delivery vehicles.
Yes.
Was that accounted for in your, your internal study?
It was accounted for, yes.
Great, thank you.
Sure. And I didn't get into it more now. I think Katie had discussed it a little earlier regarding hours of operation and stuff like that.
If I could just make one comment, Jason, just, just for consideration, maybe if we discuss this further in a working group, I can't recall whether the signal operation went flash during off-peak, during midnight of six or something. We probably should just make sure that that factor came based on some of the, the safety of the twenty-four-hour operations that were discussed.
Right. We're not proposing for it to go to flash at any time. It is actuated that there'll be video, vehicle detection. Basically, if no one's coming out of the site, it'll just stay green on Parker Street.
Any public comments at this time for Jason? Yes, yes, please.
Karen Rice, Fields Street. Have you been in contact with the police department as far as the number and type of accidents now that have been occurring to Parker Street, specifically on North Street and Fields Street, as people are crossing?
As, it...
Please, may I respond directly? Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you.
It's all right.
Sure. As part of the, the traffic study that we completed, we did do a review of crash data for the past three years at all locations. And in addition to that, I have spoken to a few residents. I think we spoke a couple of meetings ago regarding some of the, the safety concerns, particularly for pedestrians there. And so we are aware of that. It's something that the town is acutely aware of, as we are. And for that particular issue, we are proposing the rectangular rapid flash beacons across that crosswalk to help improve safety at that location.
I have a question as far as the granite curving, that hopefully will go as part of the site plan, because I have pictures here of the accidents that occurred. When one vehicle stopped to allow a high school student to cross the street, distracted driving, ran into the back of the pole and turned the truck, literally so hard that it started to push. So the young girl ran, got across the street fine, safely. Half an hour later, same thing happened. Passed out to let a pedestrian go by, and another rear end because of distracted driving. And if they don't have granite curvings and things up there, I'm afraid, because everything's gouged, there's parts that have been ripped up by the way the crosswalk is. And I thought, what are we gonna do with these people, these kids coming across? I think we should make sure that the granite curtains come from the tennis courts and go straight up to where the entrance is to the, the car jump. And now, those curtains that are out there now, they're all gouged, scraped and marked. And, you know, we've had other incidents this past week with, with accidents. It just seems they're spiking because distracted driving, or cars, or whatever. But it's, it's not safe to watch these kids going across the street. Please consider making it safe with the granite curvings continuing. Please.
Thank you. Yes.
Wait, Anderson. I'll test too, that there, there does seem to be new sandbox in front of my house on Parker Street on a fairly regular basis. My concern, I'm gonna go back to, so the backups that can occur along the traffic circle. So my concern goes back to, of course, the entrance along Fields Street. This entrance is thirty feet wide. That's actually wider than, than Parker Street itself. It's obviously going to encourage people to make use of that space, and it is the most direct route into that northern half of the, of the facility, with building number three and building number one. It's just gonna be well-used. Also, because that is thirty feet wide, and the only restriction on the, using it as an exit is going to be a sign or a painted stripe, which who knows how long that will last, then that kind of width, and the fact that, as I mentioned before, you know, if I travel, you know, people will take chances at the major intersection of one seventeen and twenty-seven, when they know there's police monitoring that, and they risk a ticket. So certainly, there's, and they'll, they'll take a chance and violate the, the rules of the road there. Certainly, I don't see that stripe or sign is gonna keep them from exiting, especially when that traffic circle backs up. When they feel they can get away with it, I just, you know, and that, that's such a wide, such a wide invitation. Also, the, I know it's a fire truck, but still, it's a large area. The traffic study doesn't show that that whole width is required to make a turn. I recommend, I did talk to an engineer in my office, that we, you know, would benefit me by giving a full buffer, by extend that northern down a little bit, force the trucks to turn in on the southern half of that entrance, give it a little curve up, extend the curving along that parking lot, so that people trying to exit would be faced with a curve. And I can, I can show that. But that, the backups within there, people are going to get twisted out here, waiting at the light down at the entrance, waiting internally, and they're gonna, they're gonna push it in, and without something, a physical barrier. The fact that people are willing to ignore the rules where they could get a ticket, certainly I can see them ignoring, ignoring the rules here. Before I finish, I just want to mention, I also have concerns about the traffic around building six, given that there's three lanes of, of, of drive-through there. It looks like that could be a difficult area, especially where there seems to be an island of tables by itself. So, but those were in mind, you know, the backups, potentially, that go around halfway around the traffic circle, like Jason showed, you know, plus just people being lazy. I mean, people don't even wanna make the correct turn, or just kind of assume they're gonna, they're gonna come in and out of that, that talk on a regular basis, especially when you have the, you know, the increased traffic flow during the peak times.
Care to respond?
May I respond to some of those? Thank you for your, for your comments. They are well-received. In regards to the driveway width here, I know with the site plan application that there was the fire truck turning paths throughout the site that have already been provided. One of the, the things that the peer reviewer requested was delivery vehicle turning paths through the site. And the largest vehicle that would be accessing the site is, we call it WB sixty-seven. It's the, it's the large delivery, delivery trucks. That, there'll be smaller trucks accessing the site too, for the smaller retail spaces. But this width is required for that WB sixty-seven turning movement at, at that location. You know, we, speaking as an engineer, you know, we'd love to reduce that width if we could in terms of reduced maintenance, snow plowing, reduced stormwater impacts, reduced all that stuff.
But that width is actually wider than the town, than the town street, and sheet twenty-six doesn't show that whole width being required for the movement.
I don't believe sheet twenty-six shows the WB sixty-seven movement.
You don't, so the site doesn't include that, but...
Right. And, and that will be, you know, we've, I mentioned that we'd be submitting formal responses to the peer review comments in the next couple of days, and we'll be submitting the WB sixty-seven truck turning movements at this location, but, but also throughout the site, entering the main drive, exiting, traveling through the roundabout, basically at all these corners here, exiting this delivery, excuse me, delivery vehicle area here, and making that left turn back onto the primary site drive. So all that will be for the town's review, available shortly.
Will the caller have a chance to see that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. In regards to people not following the, the rules and exiting where they shouldn't be exiting, I certainly understand that concern as well. Generally speaking, and I'll make a sort of a general comment about the proposed traffic signal at, at the primary site drive. People generally try to take shortcuts if, if it's an inconvenience, if it's a hassle to do what you're supposed to do. This traffic signal is going to operate relative... This traffic signal i- is going to operate relatively efficiently. We've got cycle lengths, I, I think only 60 seconds in the morning and, and 70 to 90 seconds during the afternoon or, or, uh, the afternoon peak hour. For reference, the traffic signal up at, at Parker Street and 117, I think that's operating at 120-second cycle, um, which is a much longer cycle, longer delays, uh, and longer queues. Um, the, the, the queuing graphic that I had shown back through the roundabout, that's the peak season Saturday, a- and that's sort of the worst of the queuing on that day. So, we're really talking about just a couple of days a year, uh, e- even just a couple of hours a year, I, I would say. Um, the, the vast majority of the time, the queue won't be anywhere close to that roundabout and, and that, uh, and the traffic signal at Parker Street will be operating relatively well. Uh, so there won't be that added motivation as, uh, as something to avoid.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment, Jason, one thing I was just thinking about, just in the conference room audience, uh, I think that, um, on that right hand, if you've got do not enter signs, uh, I believe at that first intersection, right, I am to stop our, or-
Up, up here?
Do not, correct. I do not enter something. One thing that we may want to do that may discourage that is, um, the people heading, let's say, north, that little intersection that you were just pointing at, right there, you could, you may be able to just modify the configuration of the, of the curving so that you only allow a left turn, and that would discourage someone from physically doing what the-
That's what that was my suggestion.
Yeah, or what the resident is claiming. We're not allowing people to go up there. I mean, if they go off there against the do not enter signs and so forth, they're kind of trapped in an area that people could get ahead on. So, I don't think, if you, if we modify the curving, that may discourage a little bit more, and if anyone does do it, you know, I guess really shit on them at that point. So, maybe that's something you guys could consider.
Yeah, it's certainly a good suggestion, and, uh, we'll certainly pass it on to Paula.
Yeah, Paul, Greenfield Street. On that entrance we were just talking about, I thought we had a discussion about that being used for not tractor trailers at this regular, small-sized delivery trucks in a main entrance with tape, which you're calling a WB67.
Yeah, that's true.
Because the deliveries are basically south of the property. So, why are you going to bring something that big all the way down and through everywhere?
You know, I'm not sure the, the, the truck sizes for deliveries for building three, but, uh, where's one? Oh, yeah, and, and one here. So, uh, the, the delivery for these, uh, for the retail, uh, stores here in, in building one and three would have to enter the north side and, and use the loading zone here, here, or continue along behind building one to access those loading zones.
Yes.
And then Bradley, you go also, um, so my concern, um, is where, it's outside again, but it's where Old Marlboro hits Parker Street.
Yes.
Not, not just for the vehicles, more so for pedestrians. Um, I, I guess I'm more into it now, I see kids riding their bikes out from Old Marlboro onto Parker Street and cross over Parker Street to the light in, because there's sort of a large border coming from Sudbury, um, and there's no sidewalks, and they can't even walk, um, sidewalk at Parker Street to get to where the light is eventually going to be. Um, people, you know, walk their dogs and, and, and those are in the intersection. Just want to make sure that you're going to address it in some way.
Sure, thank you for the comment. Um, this is something that, that we had discussed, uh, at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, the concept drawings shown here are, are the original concepts that were shown in the report, based on feedback from the public and, and from the town. What we'll be proposing now is, uh, a sidewalk along the north side of Old Marlboro, just, just back to where we were doing our work. Um, and then a crosswalk across Parker Street, along with another set of rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RFB's. And that way, the, uh, i- with the RFB's here at this crosswalk, as well as up at the crosswalk at Field Street and North Street, um, that it'll be a consistent sort of signal control and kind of bookend all the crosswalks across Parker Street in that area. Um, and, and in addition to the other, uh, unsignalized crosswalk at, uh, South Street, there'll also be a pedestrian crossing at the primary site driveway, uh, with a, you know, full stop with a, with a push button there.
Thank you. One more. Yes, sir.
I'd like to call to, to cutting. Um, if we're, um, we're just south of the site, trying to take a left out of Bozil.
Yes.
And traffic is pouring out of the site in the morning, I think, you know, potentially 100 to 200-plus meters coming out of there, going up into South and 27. And that signal turns, and then we have traffic pouring down 27, 117. Take a left out of Bozil, head mark on 27. Kind of challenges do you perceive?
Uh, well, I certainly understand y- your concern. Um, the traffic signal at the, at the proposed site, um, will most likely create some gaps in the flow of traffic. Um, so there might be a, a 10-second gap between, you know, after it turns red and before the next cars start coming down.
Cars can take a red, out of red there.
That's true. Um, a- again, the, the morning peak hour, um-
I ask that because morning peak hour, we can sit for several minutes trying to take a left, uh, from, from Bozil.
You must have noticed as well, Field Street.
True. I just, I just something that neighborhood traffic mitigation is really inconsiderate in this plan, just given, given what we know about current day traffic, what this will give us back up.
To provide, uh, s- some context here, i- if I may respond directly. Um, this site, while it has, uh, certainly has residential uses, uh, is, is expected to generate far less traffic in the morning peak hour relative to, to the afternoon or the Saturday peak hours. Um, we're expecting during the morning peak hour, only 45 new, uh, southbound right, uh, turns out of the project site.
If I could, um, just ask for clarification for the trucking routes on the southern side of the property. I think we had asked about that a couple of weeks ago. We were going to be taking a couple of to determine the trucking delivery routes, um, to the southeast corner retail sites.
Are you asking specifically onsite or the truck routes that peop- that, that trucks would travel to the site?
Yeah, so I'm interested in trucks slowing down, just in years making hard turns. So, what are you anticipating is the truck delivery route onsite for the southeast corner?
Basically to, to the supermarket area. Uh, sure. Trucks would either, either enter, um, the, the north site driveway, travel along here and around the, around the primary driveway to the roundabout, or enter the, the primary driveway and circle through the roundabout, and at that point, uh, travel, I guess, what is it, counterclockwise, uh, around the perimeter here for deliveries, and then exit by going straight up and, and then taking a right back to the primary site driveway.
That, those routes will be captured in the, the plans that you were referring to before? The WB67?
Yes, yes, we, we've tested all, all those movements, and the WB67 can make all those turns that they need to on the site. Um, that, that was actually something that, uh, we had looked at early on. Market 32 wouldn't sign a lease unless they knew that they could get their delivery vehicles to the store.
Jason, will we have a trucking route planned in the set? If you, if we do, that's mine, just if we don't, we may want to think about adding something that shows proximate routes and so forth.
Traveling to the site?
Yeah, traveling, you know, in, internal.
And internal?
I'm not so sure about external for the site, but just internal. I think it's, it would be important to understand if the routes are planned.
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
Um, just, I just wanted to clarify the, um, amount of parking in the site. So, is it correct that during the absolute peak time, um, you know, Saturday in December, there'd be still an additional over 300 spots that are not utilized? I don't know if I wrote that down correctly.
Yes.
Okay. Seems like a lot to have. I mean, you gave the background, but, um, is that, you said it seems like that's the typical percentage aim?
So, generally, we, um, from an operations perspective, we, we wouldn't want to exceed 90% utilization. At that point, cars are, are driving, kind of wandering, meandering through the parking lot looking for, for that last spot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the peak parking demand that, that we're expecting is 82%. Um, and that's based entirely, uh, on an independent analysis, not based on zoning requirements or a- anything like that.
Just the flow of it. Okay, thank you.
Karen Rice, Field Street. Um, one though the board might want to consider when it comes to the supermarket and the deliveries, to be sure to say that, you know, the evening deliveries must come in through the front. You can, they can do the supermarket people, like, you know, with price shock or the garage corner around, and, um, they're very aware, you know, the neighborhood and so forth. And if you go to them and say, look, their trucks after whatever hour it is, tend, must come in the front and not, not going, moving in all around in these kinds of ways to get to the, to the loading dock. There's nothing more than going into that front entrance later hours at night. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
I think we should, um, move on to the next item unless there's, I think we've covered it and heard comments.
Okay, uh, next up, we're going to hear from James Almonte from Waterman Design Associates to discuss landscaping.
My name is James Almonte. From Waterman Design Associates, I'm a registered landscape architect on the project. Um, just to, uh, give you a little bit of background information, a little history, uh, we worked with the town and the Butters starting last year on this project, um, to develop a plan for the, for the buffer plantings for the north and south buffers that abun- about the residential neighborhoods. Uh, we developed the plan, uh, in conjunction with them and with the town, and none of that has changed since, uh, what was approved at town meeting. Um, at the last, uh, hearing on April 11th, we presented the landscape plan for the interior of the site, uh, which essentially consisted of a, a low-impact development, um, concept that utilized drought-tolerant, salt-tolerant plant material, uh, native as much as possible, uh, with minimized, uh, turf lawn areas. There'll essentially be no irrigation, uh, within the entire development. So, without going through the entire plan again, uh, just prior to that hearing, we received a comment letter from DHB. Uh, we had a working session with them, uh, after, after the last hearing a couple of weeks ago, and we worked through the letter line by line, item by item, and, um, since that time, we have provided a response letter to the board. Uh, we issued that on, uh, on Monday morning, so I'm not sure if, if anyone had, has had time to go through that at this point. But, uh, some of the main concerns with that letter were associated with the buffer plantings on the north and south side. Uh, there was a, a limit of clearing line shown on the demolition plans that were essentially right on the property line. That is not the case. That line will be adjusted, uh, to be consistent with what was approved at town meeting. Uh, there were a couple of, um, transformers shown within, uh, the, the buffer plantings, and again, essentially those will be determined by the electric company. Uh, they, they dictate where the transformers go. If, if they happen to be within the, um, in the buffer, we will provide a, basically a retaining wall on the backside of those to minimize disturbance and to provide screening to those areas. Some of the other comments that we received in the comment letter, uh, were specific to some of the plant selections for some of the tree plantings. Uh, the plan consisted of, of trees that were, that are on the ALB list, the Asian Longhorn Beetle list, so we are not specing any trees that are susceptible to ALB, um, which, you know, as you know, limits the, um, the amount of plant material that we can actually spec, so, um, but we are willing to look at substituting some plant material for some of the trees. Um, we anticipate getting additional comments from the board, so we would like to, uh, just address those comments with, with one revised set of plans once we receive all the comments, which I think is consistent with what we plan on doing with the rest of the site plans as well. So, with that, if the board has any additional questions?
Um, so I understand, Wayne, you have a colleague here?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just to kind of, thank you, Jim, just to echo, uh, what Jim said. We provided, uh, DHB and Kathy Lynch from, from DHB as, as here tonight, we provided original comments, um, relative to just landscaping on April 7th. Uh, we did receive their comment letter. I know Kathy's had a chance to go through it briefly. Um, I guess, um, I'll kind of just, I'll turn this over to, to Jim and Kathy. If there's anything in your response letter that you feel needs to be, um, discussed further, now would probably be a good place to do that. If there's comments that we made that you guys don't disagree with, I think we should probably just ask a little bit of opinion on that. Or if, if Kathy, if you have any specific things they want to, they want to make the board aware, I'll, I'll kind of turn it over to you, you guys for that.
Sure.
There's one thing that you guys do need to consider, and I know Greg, you're probably more, more, um, aware of this than others, that, you know, based on, um, Jim's comment on the Asian Longhorn Beetle, we are limited to species here. So, um, I think that's important to understand that they've, they've adapted to that, but, um, you guys certainly could feel otherwise, or feel differently, and that's worth discussing.
Sure. Well, I'll address that quickly and just orient the board to the fact that the, my understanding of the only guideline regarding, uh, Asian Longhorn Beetle susceptible species comes from our own town landscape, um, rules, uh, the landscape, uh, component of the planning board rules and regulations. So, that was, um, a provision that, that this board agreed to as part of that, but we also, as, you know, as applies to all aspects of the landscape plan, we have the ability to grant, uh, waivers or leniency for any of those, um, items. And so, uh, frankly, uh, this i- uh, you know, with this being sort of a, you know, an unprecedented project in recent history in this town, this is the, uh, the, the first test drive of these regulations.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, we'd like to hear your, um, well, I personally, having written them, would, would like to, um, hear, uh, and I, and I saw some of it in the, in some of the comments that there may, in, in some folks' opinion, there is room for flexibility on some of that, and I'm willing to listen to that. And I understand the limitations that that brings upon it, and it's essentially self-imposed, so, um-
And also, as a landscape architect, also respect the Asian Longhorn Beetle, and then the other side of the regulations are to stay with names, attempt to stay with names.
Right.
So, that is really, really two regu- two aspects of the regulation. But, and that's why I said we recognize that, yes, you can't do a project this size with three, you know, three or four plantings.
Right, right.
So, if Jim's taking the stand right now of, and I don't necessarily disagree with non-nationals, these people, so really, I don't know. Another- another approach, I think if the town was okay, again, not the parking lots, but some areas that available supermunicipal power.
Right, so just for the board's, for the board's information, species such as maple, elm, sycamore, among others, are susceptible to Asian Longhorn Beetle and are therefore off the, off the table if you're being, if you're holding strict to the guidelines. So that's been a limitation that the applicant has stuck to, and there's been some negotiation in here. My personal opinion is that, you know, I would tend to agree and would favor more diversity. And, you know, with the lion's share of the plant, of the trees being resistant. So I'm, I'm comfortable granting some flexibility.
Okay. That, that would certainly be helpful. And like you said, we wouldn't, you know, we would stick to small areas of, you know, of trees that were not on the ALB list. That certainly opens up opportunity for more plant material. So we appreciate that.
I guess my first question, I think, is probably, well, one of the most important issues has to do with the buffer. There are a couple in my reading of the correspondence, the, the letters back and forth. There's obviously some issues in terms of coordination. Seems like that's being addressed. I understand that Bowler is another party as well that controls the demolition plan. And you just need to talk amongst yourselves and get those right. But as long as, you know, and obviously we'll review the drawings, forthcoming drawings. But, you know, as long as we're comfortable with the way the buffers are being depicted and certain, and not just the proposed buffers, but the treatment of the existing tree canopy up to the property line. You know, that's, that's a big concern to, to everybody for sure. So I think, you know, we can certainly wait and see, you know, when you've had a chance to revise the plans. And we'll, we'll be looking at that closely. But as long as we feel like the right thing to do is give them a chance to take another crack at it and.
Mr. Chairman, so we will be looking at the revised plans once they're generated. These responses, you know, seem to address most of the items that we discussed. But to your point, Jimmy, it may make sense if you have graphics to talk about the buffers, because I think that's one thing the residents really want to hear about. So I think you should rather than wait for additional comments, or else I think that would be worth, worth talking about and hearing, the perspective that they either, they either comply with the graphics that were presented during the concept plan deliberation and approval, or they're different or, or whatever. But I think that would be good, because you don't want public input on that.
So these are the exact graphics that were presented at, at town meeting. And again, they, they haven't changed. I think a lot of the confusion was that erroneous line that was shown on the demolition plan. And that has been corrected, or that will be corrected. But essentially what we are proposing, this is, again, these are the graphics that were presented at, at town meeting. And this is the north property line. So on the northeast corner at the, at the northern entrance to the site, there is, there is some clearing in that location because of the existing driveway, kind of extends further into the site. So in order to make that driveway work, there is some clearing associated with that area. So what we are proposing is a mix of evergreen trees planted on a berm. This is a cross-section BB which cuts right through that area. That's shown at the bottom here. So essentially, we have a retaining wall if, if required. And then a eight to ten-foot-high plantings on top of a two, a three to five-foot height earthen bermed in that location. So that'll provide height instantaneously in that area. And we also show projections at ten to twelve, ten years and twenty years of growth in that area. Those plantings are a mix of Norway spruce, white fir, and giant Aberviti. And I know there was some comments in the letter about spacing of those. So we have some, some modifications that we'll make to those areas. We'll, we'll kind of spread things out a little bit. And just to allow more light, to allow for, you know, mature growth of those species that we're proposing in that area. And then we also talked about shifting some of the species around. But essentially, that, that hasn't changed. We also are showing an eight-foot-high vinyl fence, or a fence about five feet inside on the Locus property, which will also provide a buffer to the, to the, abutters to the north. And maintaining, you know, the existing vegetation in that area with the ability to go back out there in the field to kind of plug in some of the, some of the potential bear spots in the existing buffer. So that's, that's essentially the north. This is the south buffer. Again, Detling Road here, again, same plan that was presented at town meeting. This area there, the existing vegetation in that area is, is pretty sparse. It's mostly deciduous trees with a few evergreens mixed in. So right now, it doesn't provide much of a buffer. So what we, we, what we agreed to with the abutters when we met out there in the field, that we would remove the existing deciduous vegetation in that area. Again, provide a berm. The cross-sections cut through each one of the house lots on that area, section C through F. Let's see, C and, and D are shown here, and E and F are shown on the next plan. But essentially, what we're proposing again is a mix of, of evergreen trees, same species that we're proposing on the, on the north buffer, with a fence that kind of runs up the, the top of the berm and then kind of angles towards the property line and turns the corner right by section, the section line F there. So again, we're, we're proposing a retaining wall to kind of give us some height to climb as quickly as possible to provide more height as a buffer into, into that area of the site. So again, these are, these are the cross-sections, C and D, shown below here. And then E and F are shown on, on this plan. Again, with the ten-year and twenty-year projected growth shown on the cross-sections. So again, these were the plans that were presented at a town meeting. Nothing has changed. I know there was, there was an erroneous line shown on, on, along this property line as well, so that will be corrected.
When you mentioned removing deciduous material in that buffer, is it mid-story, under-story, or not mature trees, or?
It's, it's pretty much everything. Everything's going to be removed in that area. And again, that was agreed to onsite with the abutters when we met out there. I think it was in the fall. Or maybe not, it was spring, maybe. Just, just because, I mean, the, if we left what was there, it would just would not provide any type of buffer at all, so. We do have, we do have some deciduous trees shown along the existing proposed edge of pavement. That's just to kind of mix it up a little bit. But essentially, there's, you know, three and four rows of, of evergreens before you get to that point.
And you said, you said, I apologize, but you said something before about using some discretion to place additional material in gaps that you might find, or?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we had a note on the, on the plan initially along the, the north buffer. Just because we are maintaining the existing vegetation there, and it's predominantly white pine. So there are a couple of areas where there's some holes potentially at, at the under-story, which we would plug in. But I think the, the eight-foot-high fence along the property line is going to take care of most of, most of that.
Let me see. Pardon me for one sec. Are you aware of any invasive material on the site currently?
I'm not right now. I haven't, I know there's probably some bittersweet out there. But I know that was one of the comments that we received, received in the VHB letter. And our response to that was that if, if there are, they will be identified during the construction process and eradicated.
There was an issue in the letter also about vegetated areas in the parking lot.
Specifically, what was?
Dig that out.
Yeah.
Sorry, I guess more specifically, I'm referring to, you know, planted islands to break up pavement and things of that nature. And I don't recall seeing a resolution to that in the, in the, the back and forth. So I just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to address that if you'd like, or if that was discussed in your workshop, or?
Are you specifically talking about the number of landscape islands or the plant material?
I think so. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the comment here.
Yeah, it was the one about, yeah, that was one for a waiver. Yeah, it was two.
Raised landscape dividers are required every third row of parking. That's the, that's the regular, the, planning board regulation. And then this is a waiver will be requested for this regulation. Okay, so you'll be providing a list of, because there, there was one other about edging or something.
Right, yeah, that's another one that we'll request.
The applicant should just make sure that when we're, we're done with all the comments, you probably prepare one comprehensive list all the way. Because it's shown under each segment, so the board has to be concise, because they're going to want to include those in their decision.
And we'll add the ALB to the list, if that's the case.
Do you guys have any comments right now? Now's the time. Do you, do you have anything further you'd like to add to?
The only one thing that I'll bring up, just because it came up during the operations discussion, the storage areas. So right now, the plan that was issued does still need to be coordinated with the landscape plan.
Yeah, we, we tried, we tried to designate areas that were going to have snow storage and spec, you know, low-growing juniper or, you know, ornamental grasses and things like that where you can withstand a little bit of snow load and some salt. But, you know, we'll, we'll further have to coordinate those snow storage areas, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Right. Those have to be coordinated, for sure.
And in terms of the landscape maintenance plan, that's one piece that I, I don't know if that's here with us right now. But did, did you get a chance to review that, or has that not been submitted yet, or?
So we have.
It was a couple of comments, yeah.
Well, in any case, it, from the correspondence that I read, or the, you know, the, the sort of legacy of comments here, it seemed like there was some good dialogue and some, some compromise, so I appreciate that. No other comments from the board, then we'll open up to comments from the public at this time. Marie?
First, a quick question. There was a heavy dashed arms line on some of the arms. What did that represent?
That's the, the forty-five-foot buffer.
Okay, so that's just, that's just the beginning of the buffer.
Correct. No, no, no. Yeah, that's just.
I just wanted to.
Yep, that's a buffer line.
In regards to the buffer on the north side at the edge abutting my property, the elevation, the cross-sections you showed, shows a berm. That's the lower one.
Yep.
And it's faintly hidden behind on the landscaping plan, on one, dollar one, with the grading range plan. This is sheet fourteen. It shows what appears to be a buildup and elevation here, but it ended prior to, prior to one year. So it doesn't appear that the berm was actually included in the site plan. It's shown in my drawing, but not included in the, in the site plan.
We'll have to take a look at that and coordinate to make sure that that's approved. That's a, that is the case.
It's actually decreasing of the age of the berm.
Are you looking at sheet fourteen?
Fourteen.
Yeah, I see that now. Yeah, it'll, it'll be extended to the point where it won't cause any issues with site distance. But I don't, you know, certainly where it's shown now, I believe it can be extended further.
Yeah, because it, because either, if that drawing, if it's there now, down the bottom, that can exist and to this.
Right. Well, that, like I said, that'll have to be coordinated and extended further.
And now you just modify it a little bit, like you, you reviewed it, so I'm not sure what we show at town meeting is what we're going to have.
That, yes, that is, that is the plan. It should be, hasn't changed, so.
I just heard extended is, I heard extended to the extent possible.
Maybe a general question to Wayne or Barbara about coordination of drawings and within the permit set, application set. If there is a portion of the site that is omitted in another drawing that covers scope in an area, they're not perfectly coordinated, it would seem to me that the one drawing that captures intent and scope would govern in the absence of that coordination.
Well, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is there are a number of aspects of the landscape plans that need to be addressed and the, and the site plans as well. And I would expect a single set of final plans that the board can review. It can't be done piecemeal. So we will need, I don't know how best to coordinate with the applicant, but there has to be one set of, of site, site plans that corresponds to or is consistent with the landscape plans. So I, I hope there has to be some coordination among your professionals as well as with this side.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree with you more. And I think that's the point, that we just want to issue one set of drawings, so we're not, you know, peppering the board with numerous sets.
So, Mr. Chairman, so what we'll, what we'll do is, Kathy will go through this letter. Is any responses that she disagrees with or feels needs further discussion, she'll coordinate with Jim on that. Otherwise, once we get, we probably, other than that, you probably won't receive a response from us until we get another set of plans, because we can, we can't confirm that this is going to be done until we see it on a set of plans. But, or Jim, as Jim stated, won't, will be in the future.
Right. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, also, it's just very hard for the public to know what that's going to look like until the revisions that are proposed by the board's consultants are actually materialized on the plans.
I think the good news is that we're probably through most of the disciplines. I think we've only got a couple more things to cover, so. And I know we've been having continual coordination with the applicant. We were on the phone today talking about some drainage and so forth. So I think that in short order, my guess would be they would be receiving a comprehensive revised set of plans after we get a few more published than we've got.
Certainly. And we understand there's a lot of moving parts, so it's to be expected to some degree. And we'll, we'll await some revisions.
I just want to highlight a minor thing that just might help to confirm here. As part of the landscape breaks to the slices of shrubs, there's actually a discrepancy between the number and text. So that does show in the last, just somewhere in section five. Just so that you know, I think that in the response, they also said, on the landscape, and watch, really read that the meeting seems to make the most sense. I think it says in some place, shrub shall be.
Oh, the thirty parentheses, forty-eight inches? Yeah, I, I.
Just a little.
It's a typo, but, but we can, we can fix those relatively easily.
It's in our landscape revisions, we could just fix it.
Well, I think what you're saying is that you copied verbatim into the.
So I just want to confirm.
Thank you, and I'd be glad to talk offline about any of your other, either of you other comments. Because we are fortunately able to make changes to this rather nimbly, so.
Say it work.
It was, yes.
Yes, I had a question about, you had said something about a retaining wall for generators?
Well, yeah, well, it was a transformer locations that were shown on the site plans. There were, there were a couple of transformers, I think, shown along the, the north property, or the north edge of pavement. Right, so those locations are determined by the electric company. And unfortunately, you don't. and unfortunately, you don't really have a lot of say about where they're located. So, right now, they're shown on a plan as a placeholder. We don't know where the final locations are going to be. We kind of have a good idea where they're going to be. So, if they are shown in this area, since that, since the topography slopes up towards the property lines there, one of the thoughts was, since those pads need to be flat, the backside of those would be essentially a retaining wall to minimize the disturbance into that slope, so.
That's, the slope is, how, where's, I cannot tell. Looking at that, where are the fences, how are the plantings going to go up under those white pines? They're, they're so old that their limbs, you know, you know, they're swine.
Right.
All of the top and nothing there. So how far are we going to be, going into that buffer zone with all plantings and plantings? Or, you know, you've got the snow, the snow thing there?
Yeah. I think, again, there needs to be some coordination with, you know, the designated snow storage areas, but, you know, that's kind of going to be a field adjustment when, you know, because we can't, we can't show every single evergreen tree along that, along that property line and, and show where, you know, how, how high they are potentially limbed up. To catch all of that, I think the intent was to provide that eight-foot-high fence that, that covers the lower potential, you know, views from, from the residents on that side. So the, the white pines that are there have a higher canopy that blocks some of the, you know, some of the buildings, and the fence will provide a buffer to, you know, the parking lots and anything else in that area, if you can actually see through the white pines, so.
Should we capture the bit about the transformers and maybe verbally as a typical response and condition? Or ask for a typical drawing?
So, I, I think that from my experience with EverSource, right, it can be, to Jim's point, it can be really painful trying to pin down exactly where these things go. And they really aren't going to have a lot of say. It's going to be whatever EverSource tells them. I think what the board should do is really come up with something of a, a typical, to your point, Mr. Chairman, typical coverage for landscaping slash shielding slash whatever we want to call it.
Right.
A diagram that they can apply wherever these things end up, so that, you know, the thing can be adequately screened. I think that's probably reasonable. I don't think you're going to get better than that.
Nope, no, I think that's...
I think that was one of the comments, and that's sort of how we responded, that, you know, transformers would be screened with, you know, evergreen shrubs probably at that point, since...
So if we want to have added detail to the plan, maybe, you know, if we got a lot where it ends up, this is how we're going to screen it.
Yep.
That seems reasonable.
Can do that.
Yes, Trish.
Trish, Andrew Stettling, Rose. Question, it's like, will these plans ultimately be very clear about what buildings are being built when? And when landscaping is happening, and when demolition is happening? Like, is it all that clear? Just sort of, do you know what I'm asking? Just like, does the buffer have it first, or at the end? And what is the lifetime between completion and...
That's a good question. Has the, I'll ask the applicant, will you guys come forward at all with any type of phasing plan? I know you're still trying to get certain tenants and so forth. At some point, at some point, you probably, even if it's after site plan approval, you probably do what you come before the board and just talk about phasing, because I think for the residents, it is kind of important for them to understand, are you going to do the north quadrant first, are you going to do the south quadrant first, or whatever, depending on when the tenants arrive, right?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, if, at the board's discretion, some aspects of the phasing plan can be incorporated into site plan review. I don't mean every detail, but the board certainly has a right to consider that before it issues the approval. So, to the extent the board thinks that's an important aspect of this, there's a lot of parts to it. You know, I would suggest that you consider, consider that upfront, rather than deferring the entire phasing plan until afterwards. I mean, certainly, you know, defer Wayne on sort of which parts of it can be determined now, but I suggest not giving all of the phasing until afterwards.
Thank you, and I, I imagine that there's, there's a large part of the phasing that would be determined just by, by Rick, the building inspector, and in terms of, you know, opening portions of the drivable area to vehicles, and obviously, opening the buildings and so forth. But I do agree that it's important for us to take a look at some of the, you know, the elements that we've been discussing, and try to tie them to, you know, opening of certain aspects of the facility and so forth. Certainly, if, you know, as you learn more about the project, if you want to propose something, you know, we'll certainly start there.
I think, I think between the residents' comments and the chairman's comments, I think it would probably be beneficial to come forward at a future meeting of this site plan approval, talk about just an overall phasing. Even if you don't know all the details, I think it would be important for the residents to understand. The intent is, you have to build a drainage system, right? You're going to do that first, right? Once you've got that established, maybe the thing is, so that the residents feel that, you know, that we're paying attention, maybe you install the screenings at the center or wherever. It's, it's up to you guys to put, coming in with a general idea, and then regardless of what building actually gets first, gets built first, rather, just maybe talking about general things like that would, would help solve a lot of maybe future worries, and they'll maybe feel a little bit better about, this is how the project's going to proceed. No problem.
In my experience with other projects that have had unpredictable execution of buildings and other components, buffers tend to go in the very first thing, when they, when you have a window of, you know, seasonal window to get them in, and gives them a little more time to establish. So, yes.
One more point, yeah. And regarding that buffer that I was speaking to earlier, you know, it wasn't clear, but if there was, if there was a mention about a setback, a sightline requirement, and if that's just an entrance, then...
There is no sight, yeah. Jason corrected me on that, you're right, absolutely right.
Got it.
You know, otherwise, again, non, non entrance only.
No, I was going to say that.
I misspoke on that.
Any other comments from the public?
Mr. Chair, did you, I left the board with, Bernie didn't, wasn't able to come tonight, but he did send some comments there, so just keep in mind, he's watching over...
Are there other, is there, yes. Was there other correspondence? We can take a look at those maybe at the end, I guess, or from outside, or... I know his, his list had a lot of things, landscape included, I think, but...
That's right, there it is. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, well, here's one right here.
Okay. I know we have at least one more item to get to tonight. So I think, thank you for the presentation, and we can move on to... I forget what it is, but we'll talk about it next.
Next up, we're going to hear Valerie Williams of HFA, who's going to talk to us about retail architecture.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I, we didn't have any handouts for this. Bill, am I correct?
Sorry?
I didn't have any handouts for this particular site, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, guys, while we're waiting, um...
You need us to sign it?
Yeah. Thank you.
You almost come out of your mouth.
Something about, something.
About approval?
Need a decision.
Decision for what?
Done, approved. Exactly.
Here and see. God, that sounds really good right now. They could have built a site with the lumber that was used to make the ground outs.
I'm Valerie Williams at HFA. I'm a French and Associates architects and engineers. My first project is the retail design. He has thirty years of experience in retail. I have twenty-seven years of experience in architecture. And tonight, I have buildings R1 through R5, so designs to review again. So up on the screen is just the first packet that you have there. And then I have the core elevation boards.
I think, if you don't mind, just because this is being broadcast to the world, so, thank you.
All right, so the building designs have a design palette. The palette is so that when the tenants come on board and get involved, we have a palette to work with, a kit of parts that some changes could occur in, like moving materials, and colors, and pop-ups, and storefronts. The elevations that I'll be showing you do not show signage right now, but the, the signage eventually will be added, and it will be per the concept plan that was approved last year. The elevations of the buildings, to add interest, we varied them up and down, and by a couple feet, and then we stepped them forward a little bit with different metal stud sizes. The height of the building is determined by the clear-to-underside structure that tenants typically want, which is fourteen feet. We add the structure to that, and then a four-to-five-foot parapet where possible. The construction for the buildings is standard concrete foundations, concrete slab, steel structure, metal deck, metal stud walls at the front, and CMU rear walls. The roof is continuous insulation with black EPDM. The column spacing for the structure is about thirty by forty feet. And then, and the roof over all the buildings is sulked from the front to the back, and at the back, there'll be a gutter with downspouts. The rooftop units will be screened from view by use of the parapets at the front and the sides, but not necessarily at the back all the time. Depends on whether you see the back of the building. Gas piping will be concealed within the building that feed the rooftop units. Electrical meters will be inside electrical rooms inside each building. And each building will have a sprinkler room and an electrical room. So, if you could flip to the next slide there. I don't have a board, but you have it in your packet, it's the material palette for the project. And the materials for the buildings include hardy plank siding in various earth tone colors. That siding is a durable, long-lasting fiber cement material. We'll also be using EPIS, which adds a lot of color to the project, and with V-grooves and banding, can add some interest and scale to the sides of the buildings. The EPIS would be like a stow or a dry-vet drainage system, so it would be long-lasting, it would be impact-resistant up to ten feet, although the plan is to have landscape beds in front of the buildings between the storefront doors, so that people wouldn't be touching the walls. Cultured stone and brick are added for richness and texture. We're proposing awnings in various colors. They'll be non-fading and long-lasting. The awnings will add interest to the building and give the tenants character and identity. The, the trim that we're planning around the, the hardy plank siding is like an AZAC-type trim. It's a PVC, it looks and acts like wood, but it's low-maintenance. And I have some samples here that I can show you in a minute, too. The storefront will be aluminum, prefinished in either black or clear, anodized, and it will, depending on whether the adjacent materials are dark, we'll use the clear anodized. If the adjacent materials are a lighter color, then we would use the black frame. The frames, the plan is to have them spaced six feet on the center, well, six feet in between frames, so that storefront doors can be added in any location with little disruption to the building as tenants come on board or change over the years. The doors will be seven feet tall, and the storefront will be ten feet tall, so there'll be a transom above all the storefront doors. And then on the side and the rear of the building, smooth face painted CMU is planned. And we have some light ensconces on piers in between storefronts to add light to the building and accent features. So the, the cultured stone that's proposed is this Bora. And it has some grays and tans to go along with the hardy plank and EPIS colors. The hardy plank colors are these, you know, earth tones, and the materials are durable, but gives you the siding-type look to the building. And then EPIS, these are the range of colors here. And then AZAC trim, this PVC wood-like material. It cuts just like wood, and it can be painted, or it could be left white. And then, you know, if we do paint, the colors match the EPIS. And then the awning material is this, it's by Ferrari line, and it comes in brightly colored. And it's a vinyl, but it has a texture like a fabric, shiny, but it lasts a long time.
All right. Is the, the stone veneer, is that the same as what, as the photo, the Bucks County ledge stone?
Yeah, the Buckstone, yep.
Bucks, got it, Buckstone.
Or Bucks County.
Got it.
Yeah, country ledge stone, that's this one right here. All right, so, go through the buildings.
I have a quick question. Are you going to be using the smooth or the wood finish, cementitious plank?
Smooth, yeah. Yeah, I think the smooth is a nicer look. Yeah, so here's a, here's a smooth version. And then there's like a grainy look. Usually use a square. Usually use a square.
I guess maybe if we just pause for a sec, I'll just introduce Mark Rosenstein. Mark, hi Mark, how are you? I don't know if you want to hold your comments or presentation to the very end, or if you want to talk about materials right now?
I'll talk about materials for a second. Okay. Don't forget, we can come back to that later.
Great.
By the way, I've sort of overviewed a couple things. Valerie and I had a chance to talk when I saw the initial presentation, went through some of these items, should have had a discussion. And I think for the, for the board, just as a reference for what level of design review there is, this is a little different than Mill and Main, which had a very heavy level of design review. It was part of a more formal design review process. This is really a design review to make sure that it's consistent with the zoning underlay and overlay districts, and really it's a lighter touch in terms of design review. But we did want to make sure that it was most importantly consistent with the materials that have been provided in the conceptual site plan process to make sure that there were no changes or fundamental differences in what was presented previously in here. And then also that it's generally consistent with the character and nature of the community in this kind of a zone setting. And so when we talked about materials, I think the most important discussion we had was really this is a, this is a high-traffic, high-use retail space and we're talking about the retail buildings. And so the durability is really the most important factor. I think your question about the hardy is a good one. Thinking about over time and the cement fiber panels, if they're smooth, you just don't have to lose them, getting dirt build up to them. So you really want to just look at materials that are going to last over time and so that seven or eight years from now, people are not saying, oh, run down the hall. Right, I mean, it wants to still look good. The other thing that I think is important when you're talking about color is you do not want to be able to name the year that the building was built, 10 years after it was built. So I think trying to be a more neutral palette, you know, the lime green is a really popular color today. Stay away from that because it's not going to look so great three years from now. But I think what we talked about and what is consistently shown here in the materials are those two factors. These are very durable materials, the use of the brick and the stone at the base. And we did have the discussion about where you have ephesus, making sure that's in areas where the planter is there, to keep people physically away from it. The less natural product is, the farther you want to stay from it, the less you want people to get their hands on it. And I think they've done a good job of organizing the buildings to allow that to happen. And the other thing is in terms of the color palette, I think it's consistent with the expectations here at Maynard. This is a very neutral palette. These are traditional colors and traditional matching of tones that I think is appropriate for this kind of use. So I think generally the material use and color is appropriate for what we're talking about. And I'm sorry, and the last thing is completely consistent with what we saw in the previous site plan. There's no fundamental changes here, or even, there's almost no changes here in terms of the overall architecture.
Thank you, Mark. Please.
Thanks. So Building 1, you can put to the next plan slide. Building 1 is right here. It is 69,000 square feet. It's a big building. The larger tenants are going to be in that building, most likely. 20,000 square foot tenants each. So the elevations reflect that with bigger chunks of the building with a certain color scheme for each one. All fairly neutral, almost any tenant could go in there and put their sign in. A nice color sign would brighten that neutral palette up. The front of the building, the heights range from 24 feet to 28 feet. And remember, we had start at the back and slope the roof up to the front and then do a parapet. So this building is one of the taller buildings on the site. And we vary the height between tenants and then pop-up to emphasize the entrance. And you can see that the storefronts are the six foot between mullions. So you know, this is hardy plank and the light blue color, bluish gray. This is the cultured stone at the base here, but then we have the cultured stone go up a little higher on the next pier. So just a little rhythm and variety of materials and textures across the whole thing. And then on the backside, right here, this elevation is the CMU that's smooth face and painted. There's a gutter and then there's downspouts that are a little bit darker color just to break up that long facade. And then on the corners, brought a little bit of the front finish around the back to the corner because people will be driving back here and just to add a little more interest. But it is a service side of the building, so we didn't do too much. On the side, this side right here, it faces the main entrance drive here. So we brought some of the storefronts around the side for that tenant. And then up here, we have a couple of perspective views. This is from the right side looking down the building and this is the left side looking to the right. And then the same with the back sides.
Are those real windows on the, on the south elevation in the retail space? Or is that a?
They, they are supposed to be real windows unless, you know, I guess if the tenant really objects to it. But I think we probably try and convince them that's a good idea, they get more visibility.
Going off of the wrapping of the windows, on most of the other buildings, you do continue that theme. Is there a reason why you didn't wrap it around the north side of this particular, the blue? If you, yeah.
Yeah, this side here.
Since it was consistent on a lot of the others on the site, I just didn't know if there was a reasoning behind that.
Yeah, no, no reason in particular. I think, I don't know, it does limit the tenants a little bit and this would be a shorter depth tenant. So we didn't do that there, but I guess we could consider it if the tenant would be open to that.
While I know you've got to remember things to go through, but I'll make, lay something out there. We're obviously not dealing with signage of individual stores, but I guess, is there a thought about illumination of the signage for these retail at this time? You know, in terms of backlit or gooseneck or?
Give it all exactly.
Reverse channel lit or shining through? Like with an opaque front in their backlit? Or are you talking about ones that are actually shining through?
Well, the lights are inside the letters and there's that color on the base of the plastic color.
Yeah, so shining through.
Okay. Not reverse channel lit?
No.
Reverse channel was the technique that was proposed for the pylon. Is that?
I don't know. Generally, reverse channel is not that.
So yes, we had a conversation about the reverse illumination on the pylon because of the street closer to the residence. We didn't want that sort of front-facing, sort of glowing plastic look. So we did that with pylon. We did not specifically order zoning regulations regarding this. And I'm assuming when we get to signage, we will have that specific conversation about internally illuminated outward-facing signs versus the backlit and the shadow box, which we talked about. So I will say Valerie and I had a conversation, because the original rendering showed signage on there. And what I said was, if you want to talk about architecture, you can talk about architecture. Signage is a whole other conversation that we've spent a lot of time on. And so what we suggested was that would be a different evening's discussion because I do think that's a, I know from the community conversations, pretty easy. Signage is a whole world of conversation unto itself. So I will say, Mr. Chairman, to your point, I had sort of suggested to them, why don't we not set signage on these while we will wander down the path?
And I apologize for leading us down that path. I know we have a lot to cover, but I guess I brought it up because it has a, you know, making a change later down the road is probably more of a complication architecturally, or at least in terms of wiring and so forth. So anyways.
Yeah, in general, we do have a sign ban held for every building. You know, this top area is where we put plywood behind the finishes so the sign could be attached.
Got it, you, got it. Got it. It's, so it's blocked out and flexible.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Actually, could you flip to the elevation so everybody could see Building 1? You can go to the next screen up there. Although I'm almost done with that one. Well, that was the floor plan. And then you can go to the next one. So I think that's it for Building 1. So Building 2 is the existing building that's back here in the corner. The existing exterior materials have been removed, demolished, except for the rear wall, which is CMU. And then the new facade will be of similar materials as other buildings. But the height of this building is just a little bit shorter because the existing structure is limiting us a little and we don't want to have high parapets and put too much snow load on existing structure. So this building is 350 feet long by 150 feet deep. It does face this parking lot here and the smaller parking lot over here. So in planning, it was decided that some of the larger tenants would face the parking lot over here and then there was opportunity for much smaller tenants here. You need a variety of faces for all types of tenants. So the smaller tenant facades are facing the center parking lot here. And again, the heights on the front range from 16 to 18 feet and then the back height is 16 feet. This building has existing internal roof drains, so we don't need the gutter and the downspout on the back. So you know, leave the awnings, add interest to this end tenant here. Some of the tenants will have metal canopy, which is steel outriggers with an aluminum trellis-type structure that's just attached and gives the building depth and interest. Just have some roofs and the ephesus for interest of different heights. So like before I explain, we just vary the elevations. And then also we have the light sconces on the piers here. The light sconce that we're proposing comes in four-feet heights, three-feet and two-feet. So you know, the larger buildings would get the four-foot height sconce and the smaller buildings would get this shorter one.
Excuse me, do you get that? Can you switch lines so that we can, I can't see what you're pointing to.
Okay, so yeah, one more or two more, actually.
Maybe we can just leave.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. One question in relation to the color palette and these elevations. The palette, is that, you know, are the elevations your design decision on how to apply the palette? Or is there choice given to the tenant within the palette?
Yeah, a little bit of both, but for the most part, we pick the colors because the combination works well. We don't want to have two blues right next to each other. But if there's a real issue with the tenant with a blue and their standard color is much different, then I'm sure we would talk about it.
But what you're showing here is not absolutely what's going to happen color-wise in the elevation.
Yeah, it could change, but this, we do like what's happening here. So I think this is what we're going to push for.
It's a guide.
Yeah.
I see, okay.
But say the tenant that wants this space absolutely doesn't like these colors or something, well, maybe we would flip it, flip this one and that one. But the whole building would still have the same general look.
Quick question, the one that you just pointed out, is that peach? Or is it, is it just printing differently?
It is, yeah, because Bill mentioned he didn't like the peach either. So no, it's, it should be this beige here.
Okay.
Nobody likes peach in a building.
Just, you were talking about neutrals and peach is a little more like South Beachy than neutral.
Yeah, we want the peach.
Thanks for clarifying.
Move on then, Building 3. So you can flip to the next slide. So Building 3 is another large building. And the way it sits on the site, there's this pedestrian walkway that intersects the building right in the middle. So that was an opportunity to have more of a plaza-type space here and also give people the option of the smaller depth in tenants here. So the larger depth over here and here. So this step works good for the project in a couple ways. So this building is 400 feet long by 150 feet deep, about 56,000 square feet. The front elevations vary between 22 feet tall and 27 feet. And then the back is 17 foot 6. So on the elevation here, this line right here, and there's a dimension at the bottom that shows you what portion of the building is stepped back. And then the back has the same thing. There's a step. And then on the sides, we were able to add a little storefront wrapping around each side. And on the side, you can also see this dash line shows the slope of the roof line beyond.
Does the central walkway line up with any of the storefronts in particular?
No, not exactly. So.
It's closest to the red one on the diagram, but it does not, I looked at the same thing. It's not quite fair because the parking configuration is not.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think only like if a big tenant took a big section of the middle, that would make sense. But this could vary, this tenant could be bigger, it could go this way more.
I know I asked a question about color, but just, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what is set in stone in these drawings and what's variable. And door location, any of these other architectural elements in terms of, you know, excluding color? But you know, the parapet detailing and so forth, are those locked in here? And it's just kind of a, you get to pick the color like a car kind of thing, or?
It's starting to get compelling that we're going to get to a certain point in construction and it's going to be, it is what it is.
It is what it is, yeah.
I mean, if we get a major tenant who says, well, I don't want red, I want blue, we're going to flip it around, but we're not going to have two blues next to each other, as Valerie says. But the further you get along, the less opportunity they're going to have to make changes.
And the door locations, you didn't answer, are those fixed or are those variable depending on the tenant?
They're variable.
Those slide, so you've got a door and then on either side, those are six little things as well. So if the tenant says, I don't want my door here, I want it moved over a bay, we can move it over and just infill with glass. So the doors are flexible within the tenant's frontage itself.
And will all the doors be the same size or same design? There's not going to be much variation?
And then another thing we tried to do is, these are the column lines here and there's columns at the front walls, so we try to put a pier to hide the column. And then in cases, if it's within the storefront, we just do a thicker mullion there. Let's move on to R4. Oh, now our first smaller building, R4 is here. And this building is about 15,000 square feet. This one is a little more unique because there is a possibility of a restaurant at the end here, visible from the road, and the restaurant may have some other needs as far as finishes. So, so we're showing that in elevations. Flip to the elevation sheet. So this design still stays with the earth tones and neutrals. But this is the EPE wood siding here and a copper awning. The corrugated metal horizontal and vertical adds nice shadow lines to the materials. This building has opportunity to just be a little bit different so that not every single building has the same look. So this, this helps the center. Then on the left side, it could be two or three. Then on the left side, it could be two or three tenants there. So it's a little bit toned down from the other elevations because you don't want to compete with this design here, but still be nice.
For the metal, is that a painted finish or galvalume finish?
It's prefinished, painted, yeah. And concealed fasteners. And then this epay wood is, it's a hard, strong, naturally resistant to rot and weather, so it should last. And then you can see on this elevation, the roof is slightly slanted at the corner here, which is a nice accent feature for the view from the road.
Mark, wondering if you have comments on this one? I, I'm not, I guess I'm just, I'm curious, the architectural kind of departure or statement here, if, how that fits in.
Two things that I would say. One of them is if this, a lot of this depends on how likely it is that this is a restaurant. This is important. If that's not a restaurant, this becomes a little bit odd. If that's just a storefront like every other and suddenly it has this very different component. So essentially, you know, they're, they're committing to be something different than the rest of the storefronts, in which case, and if that is the case, then I think it's appropriate that you are doing something particularly for a restaurant use or things like that. This is pretty common to try and emphasize it. It stands out, it's a little bit of a different point of destination kind of use. And so my one comment on this is it really sort of begs, what level of commitment is there on this particular tenant? And I can't speak to that, I just know that's what the elevations are telling me is there's a pretty serious commitment to a different use. It certainly from a materiality, the epay is a very good longstanding quality material and a prefinished corrugated metal, to your point, you don't want something painted in the field, this wants to be a prefinished product. Our find is a little more contemporary architectural styling than the rest, but it's not so far a field that it's going to be inconsistent or something that I think you'd look at later and say, wow, what were they thinking on that corner? So I would leave it to Valerie and Bill in particular, the question of the commitment on the use.
Thanks.
All right. If there's no other questions on this building, let's move on to the last building.
Sorry, while you're there, can you repeat the height of that corner?
On, it is 28 feet at the highest point.
So you're, sorry, your dimensions here are all relative to the ground level?
Yes.
Okay.
And the site's flat, so all of course. R5. So this, R5 is this building here. You see it when you come in and there's parking all the way around. It is a smaller building that is 10,000 square feet, 150 feet by 70 feet. This building is definitely for smaller tenants. And you do see the back of the building often because of this parking lot here. So we didn't put any CMU on the back of that building. We put some ephesus and cultured stone at the bottom. And we also wrapped the finish accent corner all the way around to the back of the building to give the back even more interest with a little bit higher roof. This is the front that's facing the street here. And you can see all the smaller tenants in colors that happened there. And then the side. South elevation here, we have some glass there. The north elevation, a little bit of glass there. And then a little tower, not really tower, pop-up corner. And then this building does have the gutters and the downspouts. So the front heights range from 20 to 22 feet. This building is kept a little shorter, it is smaller, but also to allow visibility for the taller buildings in the back. And then the back height is 17 foot six.
Could you explain why you chose to have these tower features, as you were calling them, on the back versus just continuing the wall with these kind of faux inset panels? Not there. Nope, no, no. The, how you mimicked that back there? Why did you do that?
Well, it's the back, so we can't put storefront back there. But we have this color that goes up and around and we just recreated that in the back too. Because if we're all just red, it would be kind of dark and heavy.
So you're asking why not just turn the corner?
I just, I've never, I, I generally, I'm in historic preservation, so I deal more with historic structures. I've dealt with maybe two dozen newer construction-type things, commercial, that are strips like this, most of them down in Florida, not up here in Massachusetts. I haven't seen somebody do something like this, even when there is access around it. So I'm just trying to understand what your thinking was or what your motivation was, if this is just because people are driving by, because it's not something I've seen before. It seems to me a little bit out of place, honestly, to have this, this, I can understand repeating it. I think the inset panel with the additional detail, it's just different. So I was just trying to understand where that came from.
Yeah, I think it's just to draw your eye away from the service doors that are in the middle. You just say, oh, what's the most interesting thing to look at? And you look towards the end. But I guess I do see what you mean about the two colors within here. Maybe we should just make this more of a feature that stands by itself. Is that what you're saying?
I, I don't, I don't necessarily have direction for you. I was just trying to get a good, because there are technically four different, five different things if you include the, the feature up at the top of the parapet. And it's just a lot, I think it's a little bit busy in that particular location.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know that I have direct guidance from you or for you.
It doesn't need to be.
I would say you probably have more luck with the stone and its durability if you don't start it and stop it, if you just carried it straight through around the corner, potentially. I guess my global comment has to do with the, how we deal with the variability of these plans and I, you know, and I want to be, I want our decision to grant you the appropriate amount of flexibility in adjusting to things that change. And that's natural and appropriate. So I don't know. Is there something that needs to be said or done? Because it sounds like, you know, color, that might not be such a big deal, but door location and certainly the, you know, this potential contemporary move on the, on the restaurant building, which is not 100% certain. You know, I just wanted to have a discussion about how we handle changes to this, to these elevations.
So Mr. Chairman, changes to, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
To, changes to these elevations, these plans that you have before you. So Mr. Chairman, is the aim to require some variability or just dealing with those separately? First, the, the changes and then second, the restaurant issue?
Well, to be clear, I'm not requiring variability or intending to. I guess I'm making sure that they have the appropriate amount of leeway to make those changes and at a certain point, when those changes cross a line, that we're, and I don't know what that line is.
Will the bill inspector make that call?
That's one, that's one way to do it, is, is to leave it within the building inspector's call as to whether it exceeds, you know, whether the change goes too far. Or the board could be very strict, you know, as per the board's discretion. So perhaps.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick little suggestion.
Please, please.
The last thing that the applicant is going to want to do is negotiate with their tenants over what color they get on the front door. It really doesn't help them at all. A lot of times in these conversations, the easiest thing for them to say is, I'm sorry, I would love to do that for you, but this is subject to tower view, tower approval. We went through an extensive process to get this done. I would have to go back if I was going to make a significant change to architecture. That's a common thing. So what I would say to you is, in a lot of municipalities, towns take a pretty firm position on what you're showing me, is what you're showing me, within the confines of a specific color at a tenant requirement is something that the building inspector would be able to handle on a requested basis. But my suggestion to you is so that we don't have this conversation later, because people want as much certainty as possible. Approve these. Within the palette that's here, the palette is a good palette, we approve the stone, we approve this, and we're saying to you that the color scheme that you're showing us is what we understand to be the color scheme that you are proposing. Absent you're coming back to the building inspector with a specific change for a store location color or two, we're telling you this is what we're approving. That's not uncommon and within the purview, what I would not want to have is a discussion later on where, well, 17 tenants came and said they didn't like the red and now it's all tan. You don't want that in either of them.
Nope, absolutely not.
So my suggestion to you is I would recommend to the board, take them a firmer position on the specificity of color here and make it the applicant's obligation to come back to you if they have that rare tenant that says, I really can't have red because I'm Pepsi and everything we do is blue. I mean, that's, that's really what you're talking about. Otherwise, you know what? This is the color palette. So it's not uncommon to do that and that would be my suggestion to you. That's how I view it and that's what I would suggest is the way to make certain that everybody here knows what the building looks like at the end of the day.
Thank you. Okay, we can continue to talk about that. Does anyone else have any comments for now? You've presented one through five. I assume there's more coming later, so we'll, I'm sure we'll see you again.
Well, it better possibly after site plan review. We don't have any tenants for those yet, we're working on them. So that might, that might be follow-up.
Right, okay. Understood and I, I, we understand the limits to the scope of what we're talking about in this proceeding.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, just for clarification, the other buildings would be after site plan review?
Well.
Is that what's?
That's what was said.
I, I guess my understanding was the site plan review was for the site in its entirety. So I guess if the suggestion is that some of the buildings, site plan review is just of some of the buildings, but not of the other, that doesn't seem consistent with what the board's scope was, scope of the board's review.
It leaves, it leaves a big question in my mind, I guess. I mean, I, I'm, maybe I'll ask, we can start here. The palette that you're proposing would apply to all buildings?
Correct.
Okay, so that helps.
It would be the same process when we come back, we bring it to your consultant and come back before the board to get your comments.
It just means, you just mean in a, sort of a phase two of site plan review or is this following site plan review? That, I think that's what I don't understand.
I'm not sure.
It would follow. I mean, we don't, we're not going to design building six if we don't have a tenant. I might not have a tenant for two years. So at that point, I would come back before the board and they could approve the building at that point.
So can I ask, sorry, this may be out of order. Can I ask, are any of those three buildings single-tenant buildings?
Which three?
Six, seven.
Uh, they could be, not definitely.
The only reason I ask that is you know that when you get to a single-tenant building, particularly if it's a restaurant, but oftentimes that pulls the needle in terms of the architect. Single-tenant comes in and so the precaution I would give to the board is, a single-tenant building is more likely to be, to be a request to deviate from the standards. So to the extent that, that there wants to be a phase two of site plan, you want to be able to look at what those three buildings look like with the same level of authority you have today, when they come in. However that gets managed, I leave it to legal counsel and Bill to figure that out, but be cautious about those buildings because they, they want to be consistent, but if they're single-tenant, they're more likely not today.
We've had other projects like this, like University Station in Westwood and similar thing. They didn't have tenants for the small buildings, but one was like a Blue Hills Bank and it went through a review and they requested that we use these materials, but they still had some of their bank materials, but we meshed in the stone and the siding so that it went along with the rest of the site. So that, that could be the plan.
Well, I thought the entire design review process was to give you basically an overview of the concept to make it consistent throughout the entire project. So if you had a tenant, you know, like you said, Blue Hills Bank that comes in and you'd have to come before the board again after site plan approval to request basically, you know, some additional materials to be used in that project. So if you've got specific tenants, you'd have to come back afterwards to deviate from this central concept plan, basically. I don't want to use concept plan, but this design plan. So basically, if we approve the design plan, it's for the entire project, you know, absent those few, you know, core tenants, commercial nationwide tenants that, you know, require specific design elements. So that's how I thought the whole process was going to, you know, turn out. Not that we were going to come back with multiple design packages for different phases of the project. So I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, is that how you guys saw it, is we're doing the entire project?
I thought, I thought we were going to get six through nine on, you know, in two weeks from now or something, but, but you know, that's.
Well, I, I mean, I think you could stretch it out and say that, you know, you're going to be using the same materials that are in this package now. So wouldn't it be easier to say that we're doing, you know, an overall plan of design for the entire project? But if you've got a, I don't know, just for, you know, Home Depot comes in or something and they want their arms or whatever. But you know what, you know what I'm saying? That you'd have to come back anyways to get that approved and put in. But as a concept, as a, a design package, you're not going to be deviating from what's in this, in this package before us tonight.
And I don't like coming back for each one of the ones, whether I have a national tenant or not, if you guys want to see, you know, six through nine. I just don't know whether there are going to be one or two tenants or three tenants that's already designed until I have the actual tenants of bliss.
Well, I, I think we also have, as the board, we have to keep in mind, you know, whether or not, they, they have to have the flexibility to, you know, finagle these buildings in some way, shape or form, because you might have a tenant that wants to combine two spaces and, you know, create the one. So we can't really lock in, you know, from, from our standpoint. No, you're, you've got to have four tenants in this building or you've got to have two tenants. I mean, you.
Well, but, but the design doesn't have to change if the tenant's base has changed its side.
Correct, it doesn't, but it might change the exterior of the building somewhat.
No, no, not necessarily. So one of the things about regular store locations and all of the openings being six feet is if you would throw up any one of those elevations, you could eliminate a door, go from a four-tenant building to a three-tenant building and it changes nothing in the facade except the door disappearing.
Yeah, you just put.
And the idea is exactly that, so they can't come back later and say, okay, now we have a five-tenant building, but now we have a 12-tenant building, so we need to chop this up and make many more colors and many, no, no, no. You just add doors, but the overall architecture and what they've shown you is it. So if you want to be as specific as I was talking about earlier in terms of palette, they should come in with six through nine, show you how it's consistent with this. These are, this is the architecture, this is what we have. They always have the right to come back and say, there's an adjustment, we want to ask the board and there's a process for that if they want to make a change. But in order to be definitive, they need to, they need to show you what you are being asked to be definitive about, in my opinion.
That's, and that's, Mr. Chairman, that's consistent with what I was suggesting earlier.
Thanks.
I would love to clarify.
So it being 10 o'clock, I, I have a, we've discussed no new business after, I think it was nine. I do, I guess I'll just ask you very briefly to just, there's a lighting package here. If you could summarize in a 20 seconds what you were hoping to cover and then we can decide. I mean, it's important for us to consider in light of the operations, so there's aspects of this which I think are important to get to. So I guess maybe we'll dive into it, but I mean, this, this is the lighting palette for the entire site that we're about to.
It is, yeah. So one of the last two pages is the photometrics plan. It's based on all LED fixtures. The parking lot light poles are mounted at 30 feet. The building light fixtures on the backs are at 20 feet. The light levels are designed to achieve the, no greater than the minimum minutes for the activity recommended according to the zoning code. The light fixtures are full cutoff, so. The light fixtures are full cutoff, so no light is emitted above the horizontal plane of the lowest part of the fixture. And then there's zero foot candles at the perimeter of the site. The average foot candles across the whole site is 1.2, and you can see that summarized on the left side, if you can read your little copy over there. Then, in the maximum, under some of the, the lights is 4.2 foot candles. The sidewalks in front of the buildings are one to two foot candles, but we expect to get more light emitting through the storefront, and the sconces on the walls, and some overhead lighting above the doors, to supplement the sidewalk lighting. So, and then at the back, so there's a photometrics plan, and then there's, and it's hard to read where the lights are, because there's so many dots, there's another plan that just shows where the lights are. And on the inner chart, it tells you which lights are which, and the As and the Bs are the same type of fixture, but just different light distributions, depending on where they are. And then if there's a W at the end, that means the light goes on the back of the building, and it's the same light. So then, back to the beginning of your packet, you could click to the, the fourth file that I had in there. It's the light fixture cuts. So the first light fixture cut is the parking lot light fixture. It's a little bit modern-looking, with a nice curve, and we wanted something a little bit different, that would light up and say, oh, that's cool light. So, that's, that light, it's called Hestia, and it's by Schreider. And it has a good light distribution for not a ton of money for each one, so it's a good fit for this project. That same light would be mounted on the back of the building with a bracket.
Are these warm or cool, or do you have the ability to choose?
I'll have to check into that, I guess, um...
It would be with this company? Well, anyway, it would be helpful to know, because I, I think especially being bi-residential, that incredibly blue...
Yeah.
I mean, I have it in my bedroom window right now, it's very bright.
Yeah.
So I think just having a good understanding of what that is, especially if we're going to potentially be talking about this again later for the public, that this is going to be most affecting the abutters, even though I know you're saying it's not going, there's still going to be some glow from it, I think that would be helpful to know.
Okay, we'll see if they can be warmer, or if they do like them.
Wayne, do you know offhand what our town streetlights are at, temperature-wise, or?
No.
We'll, we'll dig that out, just as a formal reference.
Pretty much everything is gone out, they need very few that can handle it a lot.
They're all that harsh, really.
Super, super colds.
It's very cold, yeah, I've seen it from the airplane, you could see the white spots everywhere.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll just add, too, that I think a helpful piece of information, which I think was alluded to earlier, would be a, some, some kind of plan that, and I'm, maybe I'm missing it at this hour, but that describes exactly which fixtures would be 24-hour, and which ones would be shut off per the operations manual. So maybe a little coordination between the two plans to try to describe the, the various states of lighting, rather than just all on, yes?
If I could actually think a separate plan showing the light locations with the photometrics, just so that the residents understand what they're going to see in the middle of the night, I think would be really helpful.
And thank you for that brief overview, we'll take a closer look at this and revisit the, the lighting. Does that, Mark, do you have any other follow-up comments on this?
Yeah, the only comment I have is, it's unusual to you that modern day buildings have conical, that strikes me a little odd. So, from an architectural point of view, we can talk about that, the other thing I would say is, particularly on the backs of the buildings, the only question I have is the height. As we've explained earlier, the higher it is, the more likely the angle that you're seeing some level of, so, on the back, particularly on the north side there, where you're that close to the residence, my question would be, is there any reason it can't be lower to more like a 15-foot height? You know, there's safety lighting, so I would try and pull them down when they're up against the residential side, as low as possible while maintaining the minimum light level. I haven't had a chance to go through the whole thing, but right off the top, those would be the first couple of comments I would make.
So it sound, thank, thank you, it sounds like now we've quickly shift gears to talking about next steps, we have a meeting on the 23rd?
We'll get a chance to make public comment on the architectural lighting at some point.
I think we're going to pick up lighting next time, for sure, so I'd like to defer that to next time, if, if that's all right, we'll have more time, and we can get you a copy of the proposed lighting plan, it sounds like there'll be additional information provided, so we could defer that. But if you have a question or a comment about the architecture, we can take that quickly, if you don't mind.
I mean, I actually have several, but...
Well, I'll also mention that there's, though, we've requested an additional set of architectural drawings for...
Is there any other opportunity that...
Well, I, I believe yes, we were asking for something from the applicant for the remainder of the retail buildings, so I, I do believe that this is going to be discussed again.
I can make a couple of quick comments.
Yes, please.
All right. The discussion of the architectural front, the movement, sounds pretty industrial, and it doesn't sound to me like what we were shown in the concept drawings, and examples that were given to win votes at town meeting, I think Samantha said it was critical. And it seems like there's a standard for one part of Maynard, like, you know, remaining another for the southern part, where we have, trying to track customer trends, southern rainstorm, but we have a very industrial look. The other thing was, there was nothing on the grocery store, but I thought the grocery store was first and most important to have in place. And lastly, for the restaurant, one of the concessions that we won previously was the height of that building, it was proposed before town meeting at 30 feet, and I said, does this really need to be a 30-foot building, since there is a one-stolen building? And we won that concession, that it didn't need to be that height. And so, those were, I just briefly went through those, I have some, I have more time.
Sorry, I just, this is 28 feet.
Well...
Close enough, okay.
That's much higher than, than, well, I have to go back and find, because I, you know, I, I, you know, trusted something, I trusted that what we discussed earlier would carry through. So I have to go back and find the earlier, the earlier plans.
Well, we'll certainly take a look at that, if you can pinpoint where that was stated. I do think that when we evaluate everything together, we'll revisit this conversation absolutely, and talk about the restaurant in relation to the other retail buildings. What was I doing? Oh. Next time, so, the 23rd, I believe?
23rd.
I'll just lay it out there, what, what I've got, kind of, like, have written down. Lighting, in no particular order, we have more architectural, we had talked about phasing, some conversation about phasing, and some, and these don't, this is not necessarily next time, but these are all, you know, forthcoming, requested items, lighting, architecture, phasing.
We had cited, yeah. I mean, this is probably...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going through things that I heard tonight, I know there's, there's a, there's a broader list.
Are you going to talk about landscape again?
There's a follow-up discussion on landscape, which hopefully, you know, will be addressed in letter form, and if there are particular items that need to be addressed in front of us, then...
Landscape, I think it may be premature, what we'll do is, Kathy will look this over in detail, and she'll get Dr. Jim with anything that he needs to talk further, but until we see revised plans, we probably won't generate another letter, I don't think it makes sense to do so.
Is it, I have a question, Mr. Chair, about the architecture. The changes, is it realistic that we would have them in time for May 23rd, do you think, Bill? So maybe we should table that for another...
Table landscape? You're talking about landscaping, or is it architectural?
Yeah, if you're not ready.
I mean, and, and I don't necessarily think it's 100% needed for us to set the agenda for next time, we've got, we could compile a list of things, and you can take a look at it and see what you're able to produce in reasonable time in advance of that meeting, you know, we can...
You may want to put off-site traffic on there again, because we generated a few-page comment letter to Jason Miller to traffic, he's probably going to be looking at that, and I don't, so put you on the spot, but you think you'd be able to discuss whether you agree or disagree with the comment you made in two weeks?
I, yeah, I think so, I think there's some things that we have to, have a meeting for them.
That's fine. Maybe we can do that, it may not even need to be discussed, I mean, that's fine.
I saw some, some of the documents in here regarding stormwater, I don't think that was, I know I missed last meeting, but I don't think that was discussed.
We've had a couple of follow-up working group in, in conference calls with the board about stormwater. It appears we're all on the same page at this point, but they still need to do some additional homework to present revised plans and accounts to us for review. So that may, my guess is that may be premature, but, Bill, I don't know. How, how far away do you think you guys are from generating one comprehensive device and plan? Maybe another meeting or two, and then you'll be there. I think if we have one more meeting, that's a popping out type meeting, we'll be good to go after that. So next time, maybe, if, maybe that's, we'll be ready for that.
Well, again, I mean, I think with, I've got a, the only things I guess that I can see, you know, definitively would be lighting, given that, but I know there are some materials that even need to be added to that. So I, I think I'm, I'm personally comfortable working with Bill to continue to compile this list, and, and put it in your court to propose what you're going to be prepared to talk about in two weeks.
Okay.
And we can revisit, we should, we should talk about it, you know, this, later this week, early next week, so that we can...
I have an idea for doing this from here out, that might be, I'll talk to you offline about, maybe... Because, I mean, like, for, I mean, it's offhand, it sounds like we were going to talk about phasing, we're going to talk about off-site traffic, finish, finish up off-site traffic and lighting.
Right.
I mean, but...
We might have a little bit of architecture on the show, we have to talk to Val, see how much we can get done for now on that.
Oh, I'm comfortable leaving it at that, for now.
Do we have ready?
But we will have a meeting on the 23rd, so we'll...
May 23rd.
So I'll move to continue the public hearing for the site plan review and the three special permits to May 23rd, 7:00 PM. All in favor? I heard a second from Brent.
You did.
Thank you, we're continued to the 23rd, thanks, everyone.